I'd like to welcome everyone this evening, and we'll call the meeting of the Cleveland County Board of Education to order for January tenth, 2022. I'd like to welcome everyone to the new year. Hopefully, you had a good Christmas holiday and a good new year, and if you're experiencing some of the sickness, we pray that you'll get better soon. First on our agenda is our invocation. We have Mr. Aaron Hinton, who is Associate Vice President for Advancement at Gardner Web University. Mr. Hinton?
Thank you. Let us pray. Dear God, we thank you for today and for the opportunity to gather in this place. We know that there are those in our community and our school system who are hurting. We pray for the Postons, who still grieve the loss of a daughter, and the Hortons, who grieve the loss of a husband and a father, and for our communities, we grieve the loss of John as a friend and a decorated law enforcement officer. We pray for those within our school system who are grieving. We pray tonight for our teachers, our administrators, and this board. God lead, guide, and direct them as only you can. Give our educators strength to continue to pour into our children and youth. As your word says to us in Philippians, that we are not to be anxious about anything, but in everything by prayer and petition, with thanksgiving to present our request to you, and your peace, which transcends all understanding, will guard our hearts and minds in Christ Jesus. As this meeting begins tonight, Lord, we pray your peace on this place. We thank you for your love, we thank you for your grace, and we thank you for your gospel and your son, Jesus. It is in his holy name I pray. Amen.
I did forget to announce that Mr. Shores is joining us by phone this evening. Joel, do we have you? Mr. Shores?
I'm here.
Okay, all right. Speak up.
I'm here.
Don't let me forget you. All right, we have some recognition of guests. Do we have any principals or assistants principals with us this evening? Say, Mr. Nichols? Mr. Allen, you go and raise your hand. Good to have you folks. Any teachers assistants with us this evening? Any NCAE representatives or elected officials? All righty. Next, we have some special recognition for Cleveland Early College High School. Dr. Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As Ms. Nichols comes, I'd like to just remind you of the strategic plan that this board worked on about about a year ago, began that work and finalized that strategic plan about six months ago. And the mission of Cleveland County Schools is to cultivate excellence by providing student-centered exceptional educational experiences while challenging all students to perform at their highest potential. Our vision is to cultivate excellence and student success through exceptional educational experiences. And when I think about our mission or vision, I really think about what's going on at Cleveland Early College High School. And a little over ten years, Cleveland Early College High School has developed a unique and top-notch reputation for student success and the things that they're doing in their buildings. Every year, when you go to the Cleveland College graduation, you see students that have graduated with their high school diploma, an associate's degree, or multiple hours towards an associate's degree. It's pretty impressive what they're doing. Tonight, we would like to honor the Early College and their staff for achieving a commendable graduation result for the class of 2021. And for the class of 2021, the Early College High School had 100% graduation rate. And what that means is that every student that entered the class of 21, when they entered the ninth grade, they graduated with their cohort. There wasn't a student that needed an extra semester, an extra year. All of those students graduated, and that's just an exceptional accomplishment. That defines what we're looking about as exceptional educational experiences. What they're doing with the Early College from a college transfer standpoint, from a career opportunities standpoint is second to none. I've got here Principal Amber Nichols. Ms. Nichols is, I guess, the third in the long line of, or fourth in the long line of exceptional principals, exceptional leaders at the Early College, and we appreciate Ms. Nichols' leadership, and we appreciate the work of that staff. When you go to the Early College, you see students engaged, highly engaged in learning. And we talk about in our mission and vision about the exceptional educational experiences, and they personify that at the Early College. It's just not the lecture, it's just not the things they're doing in classroom, it's the total experience that they have at the Early College. We've seen the Early College grow over years, just over a decade of having the Early College. I've been fortunate to see that in several roles, was a part of that, the beginning of the Early College High School, and see where we are now. Ms. Nichols and her team, they do a wonderful job, and so we'd like to congratulate her and her staff with 100% graduation rate for the Cleveland Early College class of 2021. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dr. Fisher, thanks for giving us the opportunity tonight to recognize an outstanding achievement of a group of young student athletes. We have with us tonight the 2A football state champion Shelby Golden Lions. The Golden Lions beat Wallace Rose Hill 55 to 34 at Carter-Findley Stadium on the campus of NC State University. Shelby completed the state championship run with a 15-1 record and the only loss coming against South Point High School of South Carolina, who actually won the 4A state title in South Carolina. It is our pleasure to cheer these Golden Lions on the field, however, they also put the work in the academic area as well. Over 55% of these student athletes have a 3.0 or higher, an overall team GPA of at least 3.1. The Golden Lions have won seven out of the nine last state championships. One might even say dynasty. Hmm. One of the reasons they are so successful is because of the continuity amongst their coaching staff. Seven of the 10 members of the coaching staff have coached five years or more. Coach Will Banks, 16 years. Coach Hallifield, 19. Coach Emery, 11. Dunaway, 9. Barkley, 9. Coach Scott, 7. Coach Collins, 5. Raper, 3. Weber, 3. And Ward in his first year. What a great coaching staff and continuity they've had over the time. I'd like to invite Coach Will Banks up to say a few words about his team. Please join me in welcoming him.
Thank you, Dr. Hunnell, and board members, thank you, and Dr. Fisher, thank you, and the administrative team here at Cleveland County. It is truly an honor to represent Cleveland County throughout the state. Everywhere we go, whether it's sports-related or not, people know Cleveland County, they know the schools here, they know what a great reputation we have, so definitely thank you for your support of our student athletes. One word I would think of to describe what I feel is pride. If you've been on our campus, if you go in our facility, you'll see the word pride, and we break it down on pride, and that's something that I kind of, our catchphrase. And it's an acronym. P is for passion, R is for respect, I is actually a one. We don't use an I, we use a one. We have one team, one mission, one goal. D is discipline, E is effort. And so we chose that word pride, and it's a pride of Lions, you know, a group of Lions is called a pride, so it's kind of a double meaning there, but also taking pride in what we do and everything we do. And I'm so proud, and I'm proud of that 3.1 GPA. I mean, we had 60 members on our team, and get a 3.1 average out of 60 people, I think is quite an accomplishment. And it's a credit to our players, our teachers, and our coaches, and our principal, Mr. Allen. I'm thankful for him and to work for him. You know, when we talk about our coaches and our players, I have Coach Collins here with us tonight. Coach Collins is our wide receivers coach and also our track coach. And then players, you know, we have 60 players, 22 of them are at basketball practice right now. I think three of them are at wrestling practice, and another handful are swimming and just got done with baseball workouts and a few more working, so it's hard to get them, school our size, they all do everything. But we have Jay McNeely with us tonight. Jay's a sophomore defensive lineman, played on the varsity this year. We're expecting good things out of him. And then one of our senior captains, Santana Hopper, who's been just Mr. Everything for us this year. If you've read anything about Shelby, you've seen him, and he's going to continue his education and his playing career at Appalachian State University in the falls. We're proud of him. But I'm just so proud of their effort. If you think about 2021, I know everybody's view of 2021 is different. We played 25 games in 2021. We played nine in the spring, 16 in the fall. Not many schools in the state can say they played that many games. I think maybe Vance and Tarboro, maybe a handful of others, but just the resilience of them to keep pushing through and pushing forward and to accomplishing the goal they set forth. And Dr. Hunnell mentioned the loss to South Point in South Carolina. That was a turning point for us. We scheduled that game on a Wednesday. We lost the game we had scheduled with High Brighton, so South Point called and won the play, and we took them. We took them on, and it didn't start out so well for us, but our kids fought back really hard and made it a great game at the end. But we grew a lot from that game, and so I was proud of them for that. And then just pushed on through to the state championship, which we won, and, you know, we had Luke Williams. If any of y'all know Luke Williams, he was named, he received a sportsmanship award before the game. The state gives that out before every state game, so Luke Williams got that. Daylon Lee, our quarterback, was offensive player, I mean, overall player of the game. Malachi Hammerick, who he's already at Chapel Hill right now. He graduated early, he's enrolled, he started class today. I texted with him today, and he had a good day today, but he was defensive MVP of the game. And Marquise Adams was offensive MVP. So just a great year, and I'm just lucky to be the head coach.
What's the pleasure of the board? Motion by Mr. Fitch.
I've got a lot of people that do a lot of work, like Dr. Hunnell mentioned, our coaching
Second by Mr. Hunt. Any questions or discussion?
staff.
Those in favor of the agenda, if you'd raise your hand?
I'm so blessed to have a great group of men, first and foremost, their husbands and dads,
Nick, how about you, Mr. Shores?
but also great coaches, and we have a great group of guys to work with, like Santana Aye.
Okay. Almost forgot you.
and Jay who are sitting back there.
All right, next, we have public participation.
Just a great place to be, a great community to work in, and a great school system to work for.
We have four folks that have signed up.
So just thank you for all you do, and looking forward to more success in the future.
First is Doug Arthurs.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Doug Arthurs. I'm an attorney from Gastonia. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of Mr. Mike Brown, who was the high bidder to purchase the property located in Kings Mountain at 105 East Ridge Street, Kings Mountain Central He was the high bidder at a price of $750,000. He placed a bid pursuant to an advertisement that read as follows. "All bids should be sealed and delivered to Dan Karpinski at 400 West Marion Street, Shelby, North Carolina, by 4:00 p.m. on Wednesday, November 3, 2021. The 5% deposit will be required from the highest bidder by 4:00 p.m. on Friday, November 5, 2021." My client received a call from Mr. Karpinski and said he was the high bidder, and he needed to get that deposit delivered by that Friday, November the 5th, at 4:00, which he did, That was on your agenda for approval on the November board meeting. That was postponed until tonight. I requested a copy of the agenda this morning so I could speak on it. This item wasn't on there, but it was added later as item 1401. My purpose of being here is to ask that this board do what it advertised it was going to do, sell to the highest bidder, Central School in Kings Mountain. There's another item on your agenda that was also sold at the same time under the same advertisements. It's on here for approval of that sale, and I would ask that the same be done to Mr. Brown. He's been given no reason why his bid is not being accepted. It was offered to the city of Kings Mountain, they rejected it. It was offered, we understand, it was offered to the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners, they didn't want it. It was declared surplus and advertised for sale. We would ask that you instruct that that sale be completed. My client did pay his deposit. He received a check refund, and then he hadn't cashed that check. He's ready, willing, and able to close on this transaction, and we would ask that the board approve it tonight. It's on your agenda for approval. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Shelby, do we have the timer available? It was behind me? Okay. All right, thank you. Second is Mr. Robert Williams.
Seven, three-quarters of a million dollars, and you guys don't want it? I don't know what's going on here. My name's Robert Williams. I live in Boston. I've got several items. We'll see if we can fit it into three minutes. Number one is the secret American Legion World Series request. It's on the agenda, and I call it secret because there was nothing in the agenda, hyperlinks or anything, about what it's all about, so there's no way that I know what they've requested. And nor anybody else. I don't know anybody knows except the American Legion World Series and some of you. I don't know if all of you even know that. But anyway, I want to, that I personally plan to file a Title IX complaint against Cleveland County Schools because of all the money spent at Shelby High School for the baseball field and more money coming in, and I hear the football team, and, you know, they're doing well, and that's well and good, but what equivalent facilities and spending do you have for the girls at Shelby High School? I'm sure I'm going to include all of that. Critical race theory. Certain months and months ago, I filed a public records request for lesson plans, all classes in all schools. Mr. Queen, you made a statement that critical race theory is not taught at Cleveland County Schools, to your knowledge. I believe you're wrong. I asked for that information, have not received it. Perhaps a lawsuit may be in order on that, too. Number three, auditoriums at Burns and Crest. I have good reason to believe that the specs and plans are not sufficient to construct auditoriums suitable for the purpose of an auditorium. I'm inviting the school board to bring your plans and specifications and bids and whatever to my house, and I'll go through them and point out the deficiencies. Thank you.
I guess the last time I talked to school board meeting was when you guys got voted in. I guess that was back in December of 19. Is that correct? And I was hoping I wouldn't have to come back and speak no more. But at the last meeting, I was sitting back there in the back, and there's a group of people here that had never been here before, and she kept saying, when do I get to talk? When do I get to talk? I'm just going to make a suggestion. As meeting starts, just tell people, you can speak three minutes if you sign up. They just didn't know the process or procedures of the school board meetings. Kind of felt sorry for them, you know, the way it ended. And I heard also that there was going to be some schools closing here in Cleveland County. I'm going to make another suggestion, that you have some town hall meetings with the children, not the children, but the parents of these schools that are closing. Also, it's been on my mind about the meeting that some of the school board members had with some other people. They had reference to Danny Blanton. And I'm just going to say it, guys, Danny helped y'all get elected back in 19. It breaks my heart that, you know, y'all trying to get rid of him. He's not the one you need to get rid of.
Mr. Scruggs, the Board of Education doesn't have any purview over that?
Well, my understanding was that a few of y'all was there at the meeting, but you didn't say anything, but when the other one was talking about it, there's a lot of heads shaking. Not to me.
That has nothing to do with Board of Education business. We can't, we do have a planned town hall for discussion of the school recommendations. Those are the things that we can control. Mr. Williams, you can be quiet or you can leave.
That's okay. That's okay. That's okay. Just wanted to speak that.
And Mr. Scruggs, you know I'll talk to you anytime you'd like to talk.
Yeah, okay. But Danny's not the one you need to be getting rid of. Guys, that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scruggs. Fourth speaker is Nanette Lindhart.
My name is Nanette Lindhart, and I'm going to speak on SEL, AKA CRT, AKA transformative social emotional learning, which is being taught in Cleveland County Schools. I want you guys to just look at the second page. Picture's worth a thousand words down at the bottom right-hand corner. It, of course, the source is parentsforamerica.com. This picture shows how CRT is incorporated into SEL. It injects and hyper focuses on race and racism. What happened to reading, writing, and arithmetic lesson plans in Cleveland County Schools? I hear more about race and racism and transformative SEL, TSEL, social emotional learning, than I hear about student achievement, you know, mastering the three Rs. What are our teachers teaching our kids? I think we know. So, anyway, flipping through on the very last page is a press release from one of my favorite groups, Education First Alliance here in North Carolina. I think they're in Charlotte. And now they're going to, and I think you guys can see that it's like the second page from the back, the press release. The title is, "Group Suppose North Carolina's Teaching Disabled Preschoolers, Three-Year-Olds, To Deconstruct Whiteness in Class." Why are we talking about this area, this subject? So, $7 million is been given by our superintendent, Catherine Truitt, to put this into effect to teaching three-year-olds, disabled three-year-olds. What does that, what difference does that make there? I mean, so the very last sentence on page five is, "This summer, members of the superintendent's party sent a bill to the state's governor that would ban teaching critical race theory in schools. In September, Governor Roy Cooper vetoed the bill. We are teaching CRT. It's being taught." Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have approval of the minutes. First is approval of the minutes of the December 13th business session and general account of the closed session. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion by Mr. Fitch. Is that you, Mr. Hunt? Second by Mr. Hunt. Any questions or discussion on the minutes? Those in favor, if you'd raise your hand?
Mr. Shores?
Aye.
We got you. Thank you. Second is approval of the minutes of the December 13th closed session. What's the pleasure of the board?
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Glover. Second by Mr. Humphreys. Those in favor of the closed session minutes, if you'd raise your hand? Mr. Shores?
Aye.
And that carries 9-0. Next, we'll get into committee reports. First is finance and personnel, and Mr. Glover's going to do the honors for Mr. Shores.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Finance and Personnel Committee met on February the 17th, 2021, at 10:30. Meeting was called to order and had a brief update on the approved state budget. We was informed that a memo was sent out to all staff highlighting the budget impact on all employees. Members of the Human Resource and Finance Team emphasized that state bonuses and retroactive raises would not be paid until January. In September, Governor Roy Cooper vetoed the bill. We are teaching CRT. It's being taught." Thank you.
Next, we have approval of the minutes. First is approval of the minutes of the December thirteenth business session and general account of the closed session. What's the pleasure of the board? Motion by Mr. Fitch. Was that G. Mr. Hunt? Second by Mr. Hunt. Any questions or discussion on the minutes? Those in favor, if you'd raise your hand. Mr. Shores?
Aye. Aye.
We got you. Thank you. Second is approval of the minutes of the December thirteenth closed session. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Glover. Second by Mr. Humphreys. Those in favor of the closed session minutes, if you'd raise your hand. Mr. Shores?
Aye.
And that carries nine zero. Next, we'll get into committee reports. First is finance and personnel, and Mr. Glover's going to do the honors for Mr. Shores.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Finance and Personnel Committee met on February the seventeenth, twenty twenty-one at ten thirty. Meeting was called to order and had a brief update on the approved state budget. We was informed that a memo was sent out to all staff highlighting the budget impact on all employees. Members of the Human Resource and Finance Team emphasized that state bonuses and retroactive raises would not be paid until January and/or February. This money has not been sent from the state to local districts at this time. There is a lot of confusion and misinformation about the pay-in of bonuses. Cleveland County Schools paid an ESER retention bonus in July, and Cleveland County Schools' supplements for teachers and classified staffs were paid in November. Mr. Glover asked if principals could be given information to go over with their staff about the paychecks in January. Concerns were raised about the January and February checks being so much more to bonuses and retro pay that there would be some confusion about how much people's actual checks were going to be. Ms. Wapler and Dr. Fisher echoed the concerns and stated that it would be in the, that it could be March before employees had a normal paycheck. Information will be sent out from Central Services staff to school administrators to be shared with school staff members during January. Was also given a twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget resolution draft. This draft will change slightly prior to our meeting this evening, and will be presented for approval at tonight's meeting. Dr. Fisher reminded the committee members that ESER money was, well, as the auditorium money, will be in the budget. As a result, it appears that our budget is slightly larger than in years past, but this is primarily because of ESER and auditorium funded. Cleveland County School is still operating on similar budget as in years past. This information is important for clarification in the budget resolutions approved process. This is an action item for tonight's board meeting. Jennifer Everly highlighted the continued excellence of our teachers and achieving national board certifications. COVID did have an impact on the number of teachers working on their certification locally. The district and board will recognize all teachers getting their initial certification and any recertifications at the February board meeting. Ms. Wapler notified the committee on changes in the substitute teacher pay scale. She also shared that many AP teachers and CTE teachers will receive a bonus in January due to their students passing AP exams or earning credentials in qualifying CTE areas last year. Eric Lamona led a discussion about employee benefits. Enrollment for the twenty twenty-two benefit year went well. There's been a question about the employee benefit selection process and whether or not the district should go through the vendor selection process for the twenty twenty-three insurance year. Everyone agreed that by the end of February would be the idea, and March would be the latest in order to fairly go through the extensive process. As an update, the following information from SaaS survey done this year was presented to the committee. When asked about employee satisfaction with our current vendor, the following percentage of employees expressed they were either very satisfied, satisfied, or neutral. With their products, it was ninety-five point four percent. Customer service was ninety-seven point nine percent, and open enrollment process was ninety-six point seven percent. As part of the discussion, the committee was reminded that rebidding would be for services and would not include prices during the initial negotiations. After some discussion, the consensus from the committee was that we would not rebid employee benefits for twenty twenty-three insurance calendar year. Dr. Fisher provided a chart of COVID relief and ESER money for the committee. The eight-page document included allotments, expenses to date, and remaining balances. Charts were included to highlight those type of expenses. Information will be posted on the district's website. Dr. Fisher reminded everyone that we were scheduled for an ESER audit in January. Dr. Fisher stated that staff from all areas of Central Services had already met and were working to put together the needed audit documentation. He appreciated everyone's hard work and was confident in the team's readiness for the audit. The committee discussed kids around and the amount of money that was being put into the enterprise fund. Ms. Wapler reported that we currently have thirty-five students participating in the morning session and a hundred and twenty-two in the afternoon session. This is a total of a hundred and fifty-seven, which is duplicated student counts, since several students attend both morning and afternoon. With no new business, the committee went to executive session to discuss personnel information. During the executive session, Dr. Fisher presented some personnel data to the committee. At the conclusion of that session, the meeting was adjourned, and the next meeting for the Finance and Personnel Committee will be scheduled for February, January, Friday, January twenty-eighth of this year at ten thirty.
Thank you, Mr. Glover. We have two action items from the.
Are we going to have any discussion on that?
We can.
Okay. On the ESER money that we gave back in July, I pulled up twenty-one different school districts, and they gave from one thousand to five thousand dollars per employee. And by my understanding, if I'm correct, if we give five hundred.
That's correct.
How could these other schools, and I know for sure that, because I called Raleigh and found out myself, that we got an extra amount in our ESER money because of, we're like a title, free lunch and everything like that. I might not know all of it.
Low wealth.
Low wealth. Okay. Thank you. How did we come up with just giving five hundred dollars? And I've got twenty-one of them right here that gave from five hundred to five thousand to their employees. Why could we not do a little better?
Dr. Fisher, can you address that, please?
I'd be glad to, Mr. Chairman. A couple of different things that Mr. Blanton mentioned. We did, Cleveland County Schools and the Board of Education appreciate the work that you did early on in the ESER process and jumped out front and gave all employees a five hundred dollar bonus at the very beginning. Mr. Blanton mentions twenty-one school districts that did that, and I'm not sure of that total. But as you know, we have a hundred and fifteen LEAs, and I know that there are some LEAs that gave no bonus, some gave a bonus like we did, some gave some larger bonuses. And if that's the direction that the board wants to go, we'll be glad to do that. We are looking at things in our ESER funding, such as HVAC processes. We've just recently spent over almost one point five million dollars in classroom technology to put into our classrooms. We've done, hired school health technicians to help with COVID. So we've used our ESER money in a variety of ways. We still have ESER money that we can definitely do that with. You know, we have until twenty twenty-four to spend that ESER money, and so this is a little bit of a marathon, not a sprint, to do that. I know some districts and talking to some superintendents, they did not have things like HVAC needs and that type of thing they could put to that, and so they've done that. I also know that there are some districts that said they were going to do this out of ESER and then have had to realize and come back and say, oh, no, we can't do that much in employee bonuses because of things that they've got going on inside their system. Now, Mr. Blanton did mention some funds that are, they're really state funds that have come in to our district, and districts were funded at different levels depending on whether they're low wealth, and I think ninety-six of, or ninety-five of the hundred counties got some, in lieu of supplement money that we will be getting, and our teachers and staff will be getting that money. That's probably looking at, I would say, a February payout, because we've not received that. We've not received, you know, information on how to pay that out. We're still working through the bonuses with the DPI and the School Business Office about how to implement those bonuses, whether they're the thousand or fifteen hundred dollar bonus for teachers and staff, the thousand dollar bonus for training, or the additional supplement bonus that's paid from the state. So all that information is still evolving and in a working process. Our human resources and our finance team are continuing to work through that. A lot of that money, we don't have yet. We've sent some applications. We've applied for that money. There is an application process. We've done that. We're working through that. We do anticipate some of that bonus being paid in January. We also anticipate some of that bonus and the back pay to be paid in February, just because of when that money gets sent to us from the state. So we're somewhat at the mercy of when that comes from the state. That's why in the committee report that Mr. Glover read, you know, it will probably be March, it's earliest before our employees have a normal paycheck, because they're going to have bonus money in January, bonus money in February. There may be still bonus money coming in in March. There's a process that we have to go through and do that. So we're working our, Ms. Guffey, Rob McDaniel, Donna Piercy, Dr. Dan Karpinski, from our finance office, working with Ms. Wapler, Mr. Lamona, and Ms. Everly from our Human Resources Office, to really make sure that we've got a, you know, our plans are in place. Ms. Goforth, Tamara Goforth is our NC SIP representative, and she puts all that into the federal system. So it's complex. It's just not, here's your money, go pay those bonuses. There's a lot of, you know, when the state announced that the bonuses were coming, the money was coming, okay, that's it. But there's lots of things that have to go on in terms of being able to do that. So I hope that answered your question.
That also is, and I guess that's coming from the ESER money, too, where we had these four high schools, the architect checked them out, and what needs to be done at them. We'll be using ESER money to work on fixing those HVAC, the roofs, the windows, or whatever. Does that come out of that money, too?
We budgeted ESER money for that, yes, sir. So obviously, just like in anything else, there's a pot of money, you budget that money, but you can only budget the allotment that you get. So, you know, we can move that money to the direction of the board, you know, and I think we also discussed in that committee meeting, you know, the ability for us to do another bonus sometime in the spring, but we'd like to be able to get through these state bonuses to be able to push that into another ESER bonus and make it sometime in the spring.
Any other questions on the Finance Personnel Report? Thank you, Dr. Fisher. You have the Personnel Report and Substitute List in your packet. Those are on the recommendation of the superintendent. What's the pleasure of the board? Motion by Mr. Hunt.
Second.
Second by Mr. Glover. I don't think we have any recusals tonight. Those in favor of the Personnel Report and Substitute List, if you'd raise your hand? Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Sorry about that, Mr. Shores. That's eight to one.
That's all right. I'll vote.
Next, we have our Budget Resolution Update, Mr. Karpinski.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. Dr. Fisher, in your package, you have the twenty-one, twenty-two budget resolution. As discussed, this was talked about in draft form at our last Finance and Personnel Committee meeting. The budget for the local current expense fund is on page one, section one and two. It stayed the same at twenty-seven point three million for appropriations, as well as the revenue expected. Section three and four, which remained the same since the committee met, at a hundred four thousand, a hundred four million, sixty-nine thousand dollars for state funds to be received, as well as the appropriations that we're expecting. On page three of eight, this is where our ESER dollars are, section five and section six. Section five is the allotments. We added ESER three money for homeless, ESER three funds for state grant for EC, and ESER three funds for IDEA preschool grant, for a total of sixty-two million, two hundred forty-one thousand. On page four of eight, you have section seven and section eight. This is where we added Kids Around. Right now, it's our best estimate that the Kids Around program will need approximately a hundred thousand dollars to sustain operations till the end of this year. On page five of eight, section nine and ten, we added funds to pay for SROs, as well as the money that will be required for the Kids Around, for the hundred thousand dollars. And as you can see, the revenues that are coming in from that fund will be approximately eight point five million dollars. On page six of eight, section eleven and twelve, it's the same as was reported to the committee for two point three million dollars of Head Start dollars that are going to come in, and how they're going to be spent for instructional system-wide and non-payments to other governmental units, which is indirect cost. Section thirteen and fourteen, on page seven of eight, what we added there was the twenty million dollars for Burns High and Crest High School auditoriums. Other than that, same as went to committee. And with that said, we need the board to approve this budget resolution as submitted.
Any questions for Mr. Karpinski?
Yes. Where's the rest of the money for the auditoriums going to come from?
We have a presentation later on the auditoriums.
Okay, well, that's twenty-two million, two hundred and eighty thousand, is that correct?
The amount in the budget right now, at this point, would be twenty million dollars.
It's twenty million?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Mine showing up sideways, so I'm having to look at it sideways.
You should be looking at page seven of eight, and you see the Burns High School Auditorium at ten million dollars, Crest High School Auditorium at ten million dollars. That twenty million dollars will be coming from local sources, and then fifteen million dollars from the Neat Base School Capital Fund.
Any other questions for Mr. Karpinski?
Mr. Chair, I just have a comment. I want to commend your staff, you know, sitting in these committees and listening to them. This is a big, complex bucket that y'all have to work out of, especially with this ESER money coming in and funding from the state. And your staff that you have are very knowledgeable and are doing a really good job, and I appreciate what you are doing and what the rest of your staff is doing with these finances that are coming in and trying to get it in the right pot. And, you know, it's not as easy as what Dr. Fisher said, here's your check, y'all divide it by the number of employees. It just doesn't, it's not quite that easy, but I just want to commend and appreciate everything that y'all do.
Thank you, my staff, and Human Resource works hard to make it happen. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just want to piggyback on that. You know, I know there's a lot of ESER money coming in, and we hear a lot of things over the news and people talking about teacher bonuses, classified and certified. I'm just appreciative of the teachers having that opportunity to get some bonuses. They're well underpaid, and any money that they can get, you know, they appreciate, and certainly they want it right now. But we want to make sure we do it right and get it in our hands, so, you know, we're not asking them for anything back once we put it in our hands. And, you know, I was reading something where there was one school district that was stating that they were giving bonuses to teachers, but had to go back on it because they were over budgeted about fifteen million dollars. So, you know, we haven't had to take back any money and take back anything that we told teachers and classified staff that we were going to do as a board. So we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I have one more. On the county appropriate, in other words, they done approved, the county done approved that, one point four hundred million and seven hundred thousand?
Yes, the county appropriated one point four million and then gave us seven hundred thousand for the school, from the school capital reserve fund.
Oh, it went to the capital reserve, so, and then we're taking it out of the capital reserve to pay on to the auditoriums.
We actually get one twelfth of that, one point four, and one twelfth, that's seven hundred thousand, on a monthly basis to fund capital projects other than the auditoriums.
Any other questions? Those in favor of the budget resolution as presented, if you'd raise your hand? Excuse me, I didn't get a motion and a second.
I have a motion to approve.
Jumping ahead here, was that you, Mr. Taylor? Motion by Mr. Glover, second by Mr. Taylor. Now, all of those in favor of the budget resolution, if you'd raise your hand? Mr. Shores?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I've got questions now, but you said we was coming back to those auditoriums. I've got questions about those auditoriums. Otherwise, I'm good to go.
All right, so you're voting in favor of the budget resolution?
If we're going to discuss this auditoriums, I am, I will. But if we're not, if we're not going to be discussing these some numbers.
Well, it's only agendas. I just, I need a yea or nay, whether you're voting for it.
No.
Okay. Eight to one. Thank you, Mr. Karpinski. Okay. Eight to one. Thank you, Mr. Karpinski. Next, we have educational programs, Mr. Umfris.
The education program committee met on Friday, December the 17th at 10:30. The meeting was called Order. Paula Piller provided some updates and information from Head Start. The Head Start performance standards, excuse me, have been updated with recent information on vaccines and masks. Specific information has been communicated with appropriate staff and parents of students in Head Start. The approval of the Head Start committee minutes and the Head Start budget will be an action item for tonight's meeting. The information was given a favorable response by the committee, and we will be recommending it to the board for approval. CACFP, which is Child and Adult Care Food Program, had a federal audit this week, and CCS did very well. Dr. Littlejohn gave a community life center presentation. This community builders group would like to implement these programs. Number one, the first program would target three- and four-year-olds and their parents. The focus will be kindergarten readiness, especially in the area of literacy. The children will receive instructional support along with the parents in an effort to empower the parents to continue supporting the home. The second program would be an after-school program that would provide tutoring and homework assistance, along with some enrichment activities. ATRM already has established a community health clinic on site. A child academy will also be established on campus in the near future. And Dr. Littlejohn would like a committee to be formed, including Cleveland County school staff and the community life center staff, to support these programs. Coming up this month, the committee will need to discuss the next steps. Dr. Honle gave updates related to high school final exams and the ACT. The minimum passing score for the ACT was 17. That will now be 19. Our high schools administered EOC and CTE exams during the last five days of school in December. Testing went well, except for some quarantine situations, and testing results are positive. In most cases, fall EOC results have met or exceeded pre-pandemic levels. Dr. Honle reminded the group of our educational program goals for our district's strategic plan. Our instruction focus will continue to be on 90% reading goal proficiency and ACT proficiency. Mastery-based learning and district dashboards were also discussed. Dr. Ware shared that we have a program called Finnish that has worked out for some students. The education program committee's next meeting is scheduled is Friday, January the 28th at 10:30.
Thank you, Mr. Umfris. Next, we have a school calendar discussion with Dr. Fisher and Ms. Wampler.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You have a couple calendar drafts and a little chart that kind of helps you to compare the two calendar drafts. Both of the drafts that we have given you follow the current calendar law. The big difference between the two drafts is the first draft has the first semester ending in January, and the second draft has the first semester ending in December. There's really good and bad to both of them, and fortunately, this year, the calendars kind of take a hit because, according to the calendar law, the first Monday that school can start is the Monday closest to August 26, which makes that August 29 for this calendar. And so in both calendars, you see us starting somewhat late. And for the calendar draft two, where the semester's ending in December, that makes the first semester and the second semester very unequal, with the first semester having 79 days and the second one having 100. That's a good calendar in that you're ending the semester before Christmas, but it's not a great calendar in that you have very uneven semesters. When you look at the first draft, that's why we drafted one where it ends the first semester in January, and so that's good in that the semesters are balanced but poor, and that students have to wait to take exams till after Christmas, and then that can cause issues with college courses and things like that. So we've given both of these to you, and they do match the law, but there are obviously issues with both of them.
I've got a question.
Go ahead.
Mr. Wilbahn set a prime example about these calendars when he was standing right there just a few minutes ago, that he's got one of those football players is already to check in at Chapel Hill, and I think maybe one going to Appalachian or some, a child from there.
Right.
And if we don't keep them examined beforehand, then that means that child would have to wait to the second, the first semester, you know, the fall to start school. How many children have we checked into that skips from January to August to start school, to college, that does not follow through and go by that time break in there, where when they're going from Christmas right straight on to college or the community college? I know the community college here in Alpha Thurman would pick up quite a bit because they're in the routine. But those children there that would probably go to that community college, and they have to wait till August.
Well, the last two years, we have ended at Christmas, I think, and that part of it is for that very reason.
And that we had the exam.
Right, before, so they could...
Right. And so those children, did we do any checking to see how many follow through? And then we had it in the past of children that did not follow through because they had to wait a whole semester to start. Did you?
I mean, I think in the last two years, that hasn't been an issue because they've been able to graduate. So, you know, early in to do that. No, I've not looked three years back.
Okay. Well, I talked to Ted Alexander today. Matter of fact, I called twice. I talked to him. He called me back again, called me back again at 4:30. And it is still sitting on that rules test, not coming out. The House did approve it again. And I asked him what was it going to take to get this off of that rules test? And I asked him how many senators was. He said 50. I said, well, how many Republicans are? He said 28. I said, but he says, and I said, well, some of them Republicans against Republicans too. So there it goes. Is it about? I think that our school district, this school district, needs to get with other school districts. We need to get a team together and carry it to Raleigh. If y'all don't want to, I'll be in front. I'll take the first shot.
Mr. Blanton, not to interrupt, but I believe Dr. Fisher's got something to go along with what you're saying. And we have voted last year to go ahead and team up with other school districts to do a joint resolution, and that's still in the works. So, Dr. Fisher, do you want to go ahead and...
Well, you're not the chair of the meeting, and if you interrupt again, you'll be asked to leave.
Well, you interrupted me, really.
Well, I'm trying to, Dr. Fisher's going to cover it.
Okay. Well, why couldn't I finish? Y'all, you interrupt me every time. Okay, go away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We have, and I appreciate Ms. Wampler and the work of her team. We did bring faculty and staff from across the district in to give some input on the calendar. And as you know, just to really quickly summarize that, they've done a great job putting together two calendars that meet the definition of the law, but do not meet the instructional and academic needs of our students and county. So, you know, tonight, you know, we obviously can talk about these calendars, and we can go through these calendars, we could put these calendars out for public comment. My opinion is, and based on things that other districts have done, conversations that we've had with other districts and what we've done in the past, the calendar that finishes before Christmas will be overwhelmingly supported by community staff and students. And the calendar that's academically balanced but ends in January will not be as favorable. However, in this year, it's almost the worst-case scenario, starting on the 29th, is as late as you can start, really puts the first semester in an academic bind from the instructional integrity of the courses we would teach first semester, second semester. So I say all that, to understand, we've been battling this calendar law for, I think, for 20-some years. I was a teacher when the calendar law changed. I was a young administrator when the calendar law, it was adopted as it is now in 2004, and we've been battling that battle, fight ever since. And so I bring you tonight, you've got a copy of a resolution that I would, was asked to kind of put together, and so after this, I'm going to go through this resolution, Mr. Chairman, and then the board can take it as it is. But, and I hate to read it, but for the, not reading to you guys, I understand you can read it, but for the public to understand where we're going. The Cleveland County Board of Education 2022 Resolution Supporting Local Control of School Calendars, whereas the North Carolina General Statutes give local boards of education powers of supervision of control of the local school systems, and whereas local control over establishing school calendars is an integral part of school system supervision and administrative powers with which local boards of education have been vested, and whereas in 2004, the North Carolina General Assembly seized control of setting school calendars and imposed a one-size-fits-all mandate on how school calendars would be set, and whereas the current one-size-fits-all school calendar start date no earlier than the Monday closest to August 26, and the end date no later than the Friday closest to June 11, and whereas the state mandated late-August start date means high schools do not complete their first semester until mid-January, and whereas the current law essentially requires high school students to take first semester exams after the winter break, which negatively impacts test scores according to students and educators, and whereas the high school semesters start two to three weeks later than community colleges and universities, creating scheduling and logistic roadblocks that negatively impact student success. Calendars that completely comply with the currently written calendar law are not in the best interest of students, student achievement, or sustained student success. And whereas superintendents report that the calendar misalignments make it nearly impossible for high school students or recent-renter graduates to take courses at nearby community colleges or universities second semester. And whereas exams for advanced placement and international baccalaureate classes are given on the same day nationwide, and current school calendar law shortens the amount of time North Carolina students has to learn the material prior to test day. And whereas with little flexibility built into the calendar, scheduling makeup days is extremely challenging. And whereas fall sports and band begin August 1st, schedules for extracurricular activities are not changed to coincide with the state mandated calendar law, and whereas local boards of education are best equipped to understanding the balancing act between meeting the community's needs and maximizing student success. And whereas restoring local control of school calendars will allow local boards of education to best meet the calendar preferences of the families, educators, businesses in our community while allowing for more innovative, experimental approaches to improve student achievement. Therefore, be it resolved that the Cleveland County Board of Education request that the North Carolina General Assembly pass a resolution to support calendar flexibility. Be it further resolved that the Cleveland County Board of Education request that Cleveland County Schools district leadership staff create a calendar proposal that best meets the instructional and academic needs of the students of Cleveland County. Preference for calendar decisions should be given to the instructional and academic needs of the students and staff of Cleveland County schools, adopted this day by the, adopted by the Cleveland County Board of Education this 10th day of January. So if the board chooses to adopt this resolution, and it, you know, in summary, it requests that the General Assembly recognize that challenges that the local calendar, the calendar bill creates and the lack of flexibility creates in our community with our schools. But also, by adopting this, the Board of Education instructs district staff to create a calendar that is in the best interest of students and our community. And that essentially follows the calendar law when applicable, but really gives preference to what's best for students and staff. So we'll be glad to answer any questions that the board may have.
I assume you'd bring, assuming we approve this resolution, then you would bring a new calendar to us in February?
That is correct. If you approve this resolution, we would bring a calendar to you in February that we feel like would best meet the instructional and academic needs of our students and schools. It would start prior to the August 29 date, and it would be a balanced calendar where we would have a more balanced calendar, where we would have exams before Christmas. I do not believe, if we're instructed to do so, that we would just, you know, we would try to follow the calendar law when applicable, but at the same time, preference will be given, as stated here, preference will be given to what's best for our students and our schools.
Can we have a draft of that ready, say, in a couple of weeks, so that we'll have time to put it on the website, and folks will have time to comment before? I think our next meeting's February 14.
We can have that, we can have a draft ready. If the board wants to go ahead and tell us to do that, put that out, we can have a draft calendar done by the end of January and have it out on the website prior to February 1. And the board consider that at their February meeting, if that's what the board chooses. And Mr. Blanton, just to jump back on one of your questions, you know, I did, right before we came in here, I was on the phone with a conversation with the superintendent, and assuming that the board passes this tonight, then this resolution will go to the Superintendent Association Executive Committee meeting tomorrow to be spread out over the state. Now, I can't promise you who's going to jump in and adopt it or not. I can't assure you that other districts will jump on board, but I know that there's some superintendents that I've talked to that like this, and I think that we make it at least a handful to go along with us.
We definitely not going after January about this resolution. Is that correct?
That would be correct. The calendar that we would bring you would finish, would finish first semester prior to Christmas.
I'll make a motion.
Let's do other questions, and then I'll come back to you.
Couple of things. EOC/CTE scores. It kind of makes sense to me that we're doing better by giving these tests before the holidays. Do we have any statistical data to prove that? I know we haven't completed this year's study.
Yeah, and I think that when you look at that, obviously, it would make sense that if you tested prior to Christmas, you would do better to have a continuous semester test before you go on for Christmas than to go home for a two-week break, come back for two weeks and test. It just makes sense that that happens. You know, fall, comparing fall data from year to year is really challenging because some years you may have three honors classes in the fall, some years you only have one honors class. But I think it is, you know, it aligns with students do better when they have some continuity to their semester. While I think that, you know, test scores are important, and our student success on EOCs and CTE exams are important, I think the biggest factor to me with a balanced calendar that finishes prior to Christmas is the alignment we do with the community college and college/university system. We have, Dr. Honle helped me, almost 2,000 enrollments this fall in CCP classes. Our students are, you know, getting a leg up for their futures. They're taking college classes. You know, to me, you know, the EOC data and CTE data is important. That's, you know, tells the academic health of our district. But when you're talking about what's best for students and what's best for our community, that having students to be able to complete that community college class in the fall and start a community college class in the spring makes sense. To have the community college semester end in December, but a kid's college class goes till mid-January, it's just, it doesn't align, it doesn't make sense. Not to mention, you know, and Coach Wilbahn's talked about, we have lots of kids that live to college, and we have, that's a, that is a challenge trying to work with that every year. But those are the exceptions. The vast majority of our kids are going to Cleveland Community College, and it makes sense for them to finish their studies in the, in December and move on to January. But it's just not about those seniors. We have 11th graders that do a lot of that. So it just makes total sense to be aligned with the college system.
So the other question, unfortunately, we know the Senate leadership is not going to change. I'm all for the petition, don't get me wrong, the resolution. But we've all probably got a pretty good idea that that's going to fall on deaf ears with the leadership in Senate, seeing as how they created the calendar law to begin with. They're not going to back down. Calendar law, has that got any teeth in it? What if we just, what if we do what's best for our students in Cleveland County, exercise our local control, and provide a sound, basic educational life we're supposed to? What if we just do what we need to do?
I think that is why, you know, we're getting the resolution. I think the resolution asks two things. First, it asks, it begs to request the Senate and General Assembly to change the calendar law, which I agree, we've been beating that drum for almost 20 years, and that's not changed. But this resolution has the Board of Education directing staff to put a calendar together that is in the best interest of students. And I feel comfortable if the board directs staff to do that, our staff can put the one together, and, you know, we're in that boat together.
Okay. I got one more question.
All right. Any more questions on the calendar before we entertain a motion on the resolution?
I got one question. Explain to me again why we can't start on the 25th on that calendar, because we normally can, but it's the 29th now.
You can start no earlier than the Monday closest to August 26.
All right, it's the Monday, okay. That's the part that got me, that was the Monday. That's the part that got me, that was the Monday, the Monday part.
And see, you know, with this calendar, the 29th is three days from the 26th, with the 20 seconds for, um, and I, I tried, you know, as an old, old math teacher, I tried every math trick I could get to convince that the 22nd was closer to the 26th and the 29th, and I just couldn't get there, the math was, so, just couldn't make it work, you know? I tried all sorts of math tricks and, you know.
It looks sideways a little bit, it looks a little bit.
Yeah, it's just couldn't, I, I, you know, I kept coming up with the same answer.
Yeah, okay.
So, um.
Anybody else with questions on the calendar?
I, I do know that one, there is one, uh, district that has already set their calendar, and they are going to school pri- they are beginning, they've already decided to set their calendar before the 29th, so, you know, we're not, we'll, if we do this and approve a calendar before the 29th, we won't be in that boat all along.
All right, we have a resolution to request the legislature change the calendar law and, uh, direct staff to give us a better one.
There are 100,000 people in this county, and there are a whole lot over the whole state. Why don't we just have them all start calling down after that Senate's office? I'll get them the phone numbers and they, everybody can call me and I'll get their phone number for, for you. Why don't we do that, Dr. Fisher?
Well, this sounds like the start of it with the resolution.
Okay, y'all heard it, folks, start calling your senators. I'll call in the morning or tonight.
Did you want to make the motion for the resolution?
Yes, I'll make a motion, as long as it's going to be before Christmas.
Motion by Mr. Blanton, is there a second? Second by Mr. Fitch. Any further discussion on the resolution?
I do want to make it clear, I don't think it's our senator in Cleveland County that's holding this up.
That's correct.
I want to give him, I want to give him credit, I mean, he, when you say call the senators, it is not our senator here.
You gotta call him, you gotta call him too.
I understand, but I just want to give our senators some credit that he is on our side.
Senator Alexander does.
I, I think, can I say something?
Mr. Shores, yes, you've been very quiet, so you get a turn.
I think what we need to do is find out what committee it is in and find out who the chair of that committee is. That's where the phone calls need to go.
Rules committee.
That would be the Rules Committee under Senator Rabon, R-A-B-O-N.
Okay, there's, there's your answer.
So, all right, we got a motion on the floor, any further discussion on the resolution? Those in favor, if you'd raise your hand. Mr. Shores?
Aye.
All right. Then we have the Head Start Minutes and Budget Approval, that is coming from committee as a recommendation for approval. Any questions or discussion? Those in favor of the Head Start Minutes and Budget, if you would, raise your hand. Mr. Shores?
Aye.
All right, next is our Operations Committee Report. Operations Committee met on Friday, December 17th at 9:00 a.m. Mr. Eddie Holbrook was recognized and presented a request to the committee for approval of proposed American Legion World Series projects to be done at the baseball field at Shelby High School. Mr. Holbrook's proposal included the expansion of the canopy down the first and third baseline stands, the installation of fans under the newly installed canopy, an upgrade and replacement of the lighting and improvements to the batting cages. Mr. Holbrook was asked about the plans for the existing lights at the field, and it was suggested that those lights be relocated to the tennis courts at Shelby High School. Questions were about the proposal's impact on Title IX. Dr. Fisher expressed some concern, especially related to improvements to the batting cages. The district is currently remodeling the softball batting cages to match the existing baseball cages. Mr. Holbrook thanked the committee for their consideration of the proposal, and Dr. Fisher stated that the committee and district would consider the request and be back in touch. McMillan, Pazin, Smith presented updated information to the committee regarding facility options for the Shelby and Kings Mountain attendance zone. The committee was able to ask questions to MPS and gain a better understanding of the work being done. MPS will make a more formal presentation to the board tonight. Dr. Fisher informed the committee that the district had received an inquiry about the property in front of Shelby High School at the corner of 74 and DeKalb Street. Dr. Fisher stated that the district had no interest at this time in selling the property, and the committee agreed. Dr. Fisher will communicate with the potential investor. In addition, uh, I'd been approached about the availability of a house in the district owns adjacent to East Elementary. Dr. Fisher and members of the district staff recommended waiting on more information from the district's facility study before doing anything with that house and property. Dr. Fisher updated the committee on information from the state budget of a new approved need-based public school capital fund. Applications are due in March, and Ms. Womper provided an operations update. Included in her update was the capital projects report, an update from CMTA on their air, air ceiling bids, and a reminder about the auditorium bid opening. Specifically, no bids were received for the air ceiling of our four high schools. Ms. Womper shared that CMTA believes this is primarily due to supply chain issues and a more favorable outcome will result from rebidding the air ceiling project at the end of January or early February. Bids were open for the auditorium project on December 21st, and more info be, information will be presented later tonight. Uh, with no new business, the meeting was adjourned, and the next operations committee meeting is scheduled for Friday, January 28th at 9:00 a.m. Next, we have our facilities assessment presentation. We appreciate you gentlemen being patient with us. We have Ben Thompson, Hamilton Court, and Peter Nielsen with McMillan, Pazin, and Smith.
Good evening, members of the board. Uh, great to be with you again. Ben Thompson with McMillan, Pazin, Smith. Uh, it's been a pleasure working with you over, and the district over the last several months, uh, as we've been investigating and really going on, uh, a search for information, a search for, for facts about the school district, uh, as it looks at its strategic plan for improving facilities across the school district. Um, tonight, uh, we really wanted to kind of summarize where we are, uh, in that process, and this will be one of several meetings, uh, where we, where we go and continue to do the work, uh, of the facility needs, uh, assessment. So what is a facility needs assessment? That's really what, uh, what this is all about, and we're going to go through a lot of that, uh, this evening, uh, of course, but it really has four main factors. One of those, uh, factors is demographic, uh, trends and demographic forecasts for this school district. Uh, in addition to our, uh, team here, uh, back behind us, our engineers, uh, analysts, uh, and demographers, uh, to really drive that effort when we look at the forecast of demographics, and we have, uh, will share that at a top-level view with you, uh, as well. We also, uh, the second factor is we also look at facility utilization. That's really about how you use your existing, uh, portfolio of buildings, uh, how, uh, well it, it is, uh, really tuned to the, uh, spaces that you need, uh, for teaching, uh, and for use, uh, so we do look at utilization, how well you're utilizing each one of those buildings. Uh, third is we do look at the condition, the overall physical condition of the building that has various, uh, categories, obviously, uh, HVAC is one of those, also site, uh, the building envelope, whether that's roof or exterior walls or windows, uh, building interiors, and of course code, um, criteria as well. So those four, those three, uh, really, those three factors really, uh, form a lot of information, uh, back behind the scenes about what's going on for the school district, both in terms of right now in the immediate, uh, and what will be forecasted, uh, in the coming years, uh, also. Last factor is, is, uh, is really your guiding principles, and that's where do you want the district to go overall over the course of the next, uh, decade? Uh, and that's really what we, uh, we, we look at as far as how do we judge, uh, maybe improvements, uh, in, into the future. So tonight, um, again, overall, uh, in-progress review, this is more for information than anything else, uh, and, and we're going to be looking at that 20,000-foot level, of course, uh, where we're, where we're, uh, trying to disseminate a lot of information, uh, to you. Obviously, you're, you have access to all of the reports, um, and, and the, and the update, um, the executive summary, um, in front of you. Uh, we'll also look at how that, those guiding principles begin to apply, uh, specifically how they may apply in the Shelby Zone, and we'll talk about the next steps, uh, after, uh, after that. Bear with me, get our technology to work. All right, so first, first factor, uh, demographic, uh, study. Do you have the, thank you. So we completed a demographic study, uh, about, uh, six weeks ago, and McKibben Demographics was the demographer for, for this, uh, portion of the work, and what, uh, they, they specialize in school district, uh, planning and, uh, demographics, uh, and analysis. So, uh, they come, they came, uh, back with several factors, uh, that really inform how we look at, uh, trends and forecasts for the school district overall, uh, over the next, uh, five years, uh, and over the next, uh, 10 years. Obviously, and as part of that report, the next five years is fairly well-known, uh, the, the further out that you get, uh, is a little bit more ambiguous, but that five year is, is, uh, based on the way that he, uh, analyzes, is a pretty fundamental, uh, forecast for, for how the school district either grows, stays the same, or, or declines. Uh, so as a result of that, uh, demographic forecast, we were able to see overall, uh, how the district may be performing from a population standpoint and how that affects enrollment, uh, but we are also able to look zone by zone, school by school, and grade by grade, uh, for each one of the schools to see exactly how that population growth is going to affect enrollment for each of your schools, for each of your zones, uh, over that course. Uh, good news is if you look at it from an overall planning perspective, uh, all of Cleveland County, there is, uh, virtually stabilization, uh, of the enrollment, uh, for each, for the, uh, district overall. That's a good, uh, that, that's neither high growth nor decline in a, in a, in a significant way. Um, stabilization means that you know what you have and you can plan for it accordingly. So that's not to say that some zones are not growing, uh, and some zones are, are not declining. Some zone, some are. Um, in, in your four major zones, uh, we've broken down, uh, how that growth and how that decline happens, of course, just for information as a guide, uh, as far as the facilities, uh, go, of course, but, uh, overall, the district, uh, seems to be, uh, fairly stable in its population and therefore stable in its enrollment, uh, overall. Peter's going to kind of walk through a couple of those maps, uh, just overall to, to, to kind of show you how that affects those demographic forecasts in those zones.
So if you look, uh, throughout the, the map of the district, uh, areas that are highlighted red, those are the areas that are increasing the most over the next, uh, 10 years, um, and, which is good so that we can understand where those are, maybe they come as a surprise, maybe they don't, um, but areas that are kind of darker red, uh, to lighter red, those are areas where you're getting an increase in your enrollment. Uh, areas where it's grayed out, uh, you're staying neutral. Over the course of the next 10 years, you're not getting an increase or decrease enrollment. Uh, and then, uh, in the areas that are green, that's where you're actually getting a decrease in enrollment. So, uh, this map is when you're looking at your, uh, elementary schools only, um, over the course of the next 10 years, your, uh, your elementary school enrollment is actually increasing overall. Um, when we go to the next slide, we start to look at the, uh, intermediate and middle schools, uh, you do, over the next 10 years, have a little bit of a decline in your enrollment overall for these zones. Um, obviously, you can tell by the map which areas are having the most decrease, but for the most part, it's staying like, as Ben said, fairly stable. Uh, and then we went from elementary to middle, and now we're going to the high schools and seeing what your, uh, overall enrollment is doing for these zones. Um, for the most part, there's a slight decrease in enrollment, but for, which is a good thing, as we mentioned before, for how we can actually look at your facilities and how to use them, uh, in the future.
So, a little bit about the forecast, right? So we're not prophets here. We can't, we can, we can predict the future based on what's happened in the past and what we assume, uh, based on all available evidence is going to likely happen into the future. If things change in a big way, obviously, that updates your, your demographic forecast. That would be, you have an enormous industry moving in, for instance. That would affect your demographic forecast. You have catastrophic events, or you have infrastructure changes. Those kind of things really affect your demographic forecast. We don't project any of those major events occurring, uh, so that's the basis of, of the forecast, is that everything stays, um, stays in the economy, uh, and in, uh, the, the, the community, uh, of, of, of Cleveland County, uh, is the same, uh, over the, over the course. So just a little note on that is that, again, um, this is the, the, based on the best available evid- evidence for, um, for demographic trends, uh, and forecasts. From that demographic trends and forecasts, that allows us to evaluate each school and how you're using it, uh, how you're utilizing each one of those spaces. So, uh, in addition to the work that we've done in demography, we've taken a look at all of your schools, we have catalogued all of your schools, we've catalogued all of the spaces inside, uh, whether they be instructional spaces, administrative spaces, support spaces, every single space within, uh, your buildings, uh, as they are, uh, right now and functioning right now, to evaluate, uh, what their capacity is, uh, and then judge that capacity on, on the current enrollment and in the five-year picture and in the 10-year window about how, uh, how that will likely be utilized, uh, given the results of the demographic, uh, study overall. It's a lot of data, uh, so we won't spend a whole lot, uh, going through there, but you can start to see heat maps of how that might affect every, every zone.
Right, here you're looking at the, uh, the four district-wide, um, facilities there at the top of the page, um, starting out at a, a population of 400 now, um, and, uh, looking at, um, the popul- or, and then the target capacity of the schools, uh, current, uh, target capacity is 661. So you're, the, the capacity, you've got capacity in those schools, in Kings Mountain, you've got a capacity of about, uh, a population of about 4,000, but of a capacity of about 5,000. So you're at about, uh, 1,000, uh, extra seats there. Um, in Shelby District, you got about 2,800 students, uh, you've got seats for 3,700, so you've got about 900, uh, excess capacity there, and you can see over time, um, that at 936 now, 924 in five years, and a 907 going forward, so that's that stabilized number that we've, we've shown you, but you're going to continue to have that excess capacity, uh, going out in the foreseeable future, and then in the crest, um, you've got an excess capacity there of 300, uh, increasing to 500, and then, uh, maybe about 6, 700 in, in the long term.
Again, uh, just a, a lot of information, and certainly you review that, uh, independently of, of this presentation, because it is just a lot of information to kind of go through, but really, this is the pairing of that demographic information, how you're using that building and the capacity that your buildings currently have for either first, uh, for future growth, um, for Cleveland County schools, uh, overall. Um, I won't spend a whole lot of time on this, but I'll just kind of go through this really quickly, is that chart, uh, those three charts that we just shared are also color-coded on that map so that you can see in graphic form, uh, how those, uh, either utilize, underutilized spaces or utilized spaces are located within each one of the zones, each one of the, uh, four, uh, main, main zones. Uh, overall, again, we're talking about undercapacity, um, uh, not, not very many, uh, schools have that undercapacity, uh, of, of more than 200 seats, um, really, it's mostly stable. Um, what that is from a, and that's not a bad thing, that's really a good thing, uh, from a planning standpoint, because that gives you flexibility, uh, kind of overall, and, and, um, if you do have growth into the future, now, obviously, uh, additional growth, uh, into the future. We've looked at that from both a projection of what happens in five years, uh, and what happens, uh, in 10 years, uh, of course, and, and those are included, uh, in your packet, uh, as well. So, uh, third factor, facility assessments, uh, that's the physical condition of each one of the schools. Uh, like we said, that takes the most time from our group, uh, to really go through, uh, stick our head above all ceilings, get on the roof, uh, make sure that we look at all, uh, nooks and crannies within, uh, within a given school. So we have done that process for both the Kings Mountain Zone and the Shelby Zone. Uh, we will continue to do that process, uh, for, uh, for, for the rest of the zones, uh, for the rest of the schools, uh, here in, uh, Cleveland County, uh, as well. So this is more in-process, but what we tend to do there is, uh, we break those into categories like I mentioned earlier, um, uh, building envelope, site, uh, health, safety, and security, um, and, and, uh, other categories like that, and really rate those, uh, based on, based on what we see, uh, out there overall. Um, we've got these overall scores, and I want to, I want to talk a little bit about the overall scores. Um, this is nothing more than just bringing every factor and making the average of, of every factor. One thing that you get as soon as we finish our facility assessment is really to be able to look at those factors from a cost standpoint as well, so that you have a scale of value about what those, uh, what those physical conditions, uh, actually mean, and can quantify those both in the short term and in the long term. Uh, so we're in process, uh, with that right now, I just wanted to point that out in the overall scores, is they may represent, um, just, you know, a, a 3D being a a 3D being a fair school, an operating school, and that's just the overall median of the scores that we have. For each of your facilities, the way that we do this is that we look at 268 individual components of each school to give recommendations on. And each one of those 268 components gets a cost associated with it, so that you can again, see the scale of value there and make improvement plans within the short term and in the long term. Won't spend a whole lot of time on this since it is in progress, but again, the same exercise of going and looking at those overall views, overall scores, to kind of really get an idea of where you are in the mix.
And as Ben said, these have been applied through the Kings Mountain and Shelby Zone. But this is, as part of that third tier that we look at the schools, is really important to, for us to not only understand what the physical condition, but also how you can project forward, because when you start to take into consideration the trends of enrollment, how the buildings are being used, and what the physical conditions are, then you really get that full picture for which you can start to think about the future with your facilities, not just now, or five years, but also 10 years down the road.
So lots, and I know I'm spending a very short amount of time on these components, but it has taken several months to kind of gather all that information presented to not only administration and staff, but also facility committee, building committee as well. That fourth and last area in which we look are the guiding principles. And this is where we really need the district's help. So we went through an exercise with the building committee to really understand what are those principles that the district sees in the future to meet its strategic goals and to meet its strategic plan and to be in line with its mission and vision. So I'll spend just a few moments talking about each one of these. I'll try not to go into the weeds here, but these were, as we presented to the committee, the principles, the guiding principles that we should look at as assessors to really make recommendations for improvements to each school or to each zone. So the first one is, it seemed like the best, or it seemed like everyone really grabbed on to and gravitated towards this, is it, everything should be as efficient, operationally efficient, and as effective as possible for the school district. That sounds like a very simple statement, but, you know, that really guides how you look at maybe recommending improvements per zone. So that was really a first and foremost. We should always apply good principles of operational efficiency and effectiveness in how we make key decisions in maintaining, improving, or changing each of those campuses. The second one was maintaining those school district zones. So you have four main zones, so we're going to continue. We're not changing attendance lines for the four main zones overall. So one of the guiding principles is to keep those zones, keep those communities as they are right now from a zoning, from a attendance zone standpoint. Third is continuing to maintain and improve each of the school systems, four high school campuses in their current locations. We looked at the facility assessment from a physical condition standpoint, obviously the utilization and the demographic trends for high schools, for Cleveland County schools, and it appears that you have high schools that meet your needs for each one of those areas. There's no, there's no need to combine or do additions or anything like that from a space utilization and educational standpoint kind of overall. It's really about improving those schools and making them a quality environment overall from a high school standpoint. Number four, in each one of the enrollment campuses, were designed by grade, are continuing to be designed by grade-level groupings. Now, this is where we're a little different, because zones are different here in Cleveland County. Overall, it looks like the best educational approach that was presented and discussed at the committee was to group schools by cohorts, being elementary, being kindergarten through fifth, middle school, comprehensive middle school, which is grades six through eighth, and again, high schools, keeping those the same at ninth through 12th. So our guiding principle then would be look at scenarios in which those, that guiding principle can be applied from a cohort standpoint. When we looked at how that might happen, what are the optimal sizes for an elementary school, given that configuration, a middle school and a high school, given that configuration? We went through and looked at certainly the Department of Public Instruction's standards there, but what is it for Cleveland County specifically? What we found was the optimal size here in Cleveland County is for elementary schools, the optimal size is between 400 and 600 students, for middle, 800 to 900 students, and for high school, anywhere from 1,000 to 1,500 students. And demographics support that grouping as well as space utilization overall. Final one of those guiding principles is to really continue to offer the choices that you do have within the district, and what we mean by that is early college or any of the programs that you have throughout the district. So we're not trying to, as a guiding principle, change that in any way when we talk about improvement plans kind of overall. So with that, that's kind of the overarching of all of where we are. Again, lots of data back behind it. What I want to take now is that, are those guiding principles and apply them, show you how we might recommend applying them to one zone, and that's Shelby tonight. Obviously, you have four, so there'll be additional discussion about those, of course. But Shelby seemed to be one of the zones that we could look at and start to really discuss. And then we presented these findings or recommendations to the committee.
So when we look at the Shelby Zone, right away, you can see there's a couple of schools that we've labeled as twos on the score sheet for the facility assessment. Graham and Marion. We also have James Love as a two as well. But what we want to think about is how can we use those guiding principles to align what you currently have with what you actually want to do as a district? So when we start to look at what the recommendations can be for, you know, if you want to have a true middle school and you don't have the intermediate, that starts to allow us to shift some options and look at creating this really efficient use of facilities throughout the district. So step one is converting the existing Shelby Middle School into a complete one. So instead of just being seventh and eighth grade, at sixth through eighth grade, students will go from the Shelby Intermediate to Shelby Middle School. What that then does is you're going to have to do a little bit of realignment with your fifth-grade students who are currently not at their home elementary schools. So that's an important thing to consider, is when you do that, then your enrollment numbers in those elementary schools are going to increase. So that's kind of step one, step two. So then what that allows us to do, and is, we'll go back to where, there we go, is to actually consolidate the existing four elementary schools into three elementary schools. And that would be done by combining Graham Elementary and Marion Elementary into one elementary school, which then, since you've moved your students, your seventh and eighth grade, or sorry, your students of intermediate school to the middle school, that allows us to actually use that intermediate school as a location for where you'd have that combined to elementary school. Once that happens, then, that's not the final piece of that, you still have to make sure that all these schools can handle that increase with the fifth-grade students going to those areas, and make sure that the physical conditions of those schools match what you need to have for learning environments. So there's always that need for improvements, and that's part of the facility assessments, identifying where those improvements need to happen. So what does this kind of look like then in the future for that? Well, the first thing you have to then look at is when you have those two buildings go offline, you've got decisions to make as to what you want to do with those properties, whether they are sold or disposed of in different ways. That would be up to the school board as to what those decisions would be. As Ben mentioned earlier, we're not ignoring the high school. Obviously, there's always improvements that you have to do to the high school, and so that's always going to happen in the background as we're making these kind of decisions and changes throughout the district. Obviously, improvements to the schools that are not the high schools, so again, your other elementary schools, Jefferson, James Love, North Shelby's a new school, so there's really not a whole lot yet to do there. And then obviously, perhaps if you have to do anything at the middle school, which probably you wouldn't have to, because again, that's also a new school. One of the other things that we're also considering, and this is completely up to the school board, is, you know, do you want to have a centralized pre-K program, or do you want to keep it as it is currently now at their home schools? You now have that option to do that, because when you move the Graham and Marion students to what's currently your intermediate school, you actually could centralize them at that location. That's an option, that's not necessarily a recommendation, but those are things that you guys will have to kind of consider as to what you want to do with the pre-K program. One of the kind of things that results from this is when you take two buildings offline, is you're no longer paying for utilities at those locations. So what we did is we took the utility costs that you have for the average for the last five years and just applied that number projecting at 10 years. Obviously, utility costs are probably going to go up, so it could be a different number, but just based on the last five years and averaging that and putting that to the next 10, you have just under 100 or $1.8 million that utility costs alone are going to be saved with that. So the other thing that we have to think about, again, is those fifth graders are going to go back to their home elementary schools, and so we have to then look at and make sure, again, do the schools that you have, can they support that? And that's, again, part of this process.
Just so to summarize, and what we're really recommending, and we've looked at your schools, we look at the size of your schools, the capacities, and the main recommendation is integrating the intermediate schools into the middle schools, both in the Shelby District and the Kings Mountain District, and bringing them into alignment. So the whole district is in a traditional elementary, middle, and high school model. We presented both of those to the committee, as you remember, and the Shelby District, actually, based on the utilization and the growth rates and everything like that, a realignment and making all these schools a lot more efficient, really doesn't take a whole lot of capital investment in new facilities to accommodate that. You don't have to create an addition here or put temporary classrooms in a location to accomplish that. The way all the numbers work and the way all the schools kind of lay out, Shelby District is able to be accomplished relatively simply without a lot of that capital investment. The Kings Mountain District, when we utilize that approach of integrating the intermediate school back into that middle school system, is a little bit more complicated, because a lot of the schools are a little bit closer to capacity than they are in Shelby. The growth rates are a little bit different. Everything's just a little bit different in Kings Mountain, but we wanted to bring you our recommendations on Shelby, because things seem to be working out pretty well there in Shelby.
And again, we're going to follow that up with continuing to have that conversation about not only Shelby, but also Kings Mountain, Crest, and Burns as well. We presented this kind of a recommendation, and really, it's up to you, right? It's not up to us how you want to proceed. But tonight was just more about information. Here's our recommendation for the Shelby Zone. Here are the guiding principles. Here's the data that supports all of that, all of those guiding principles and improvements. And let's start to go to work for the rest of the zones, complete the study, complete all of the information, so that we can again, provide you with the best information available to make decisions. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you guys have.
Just to give board members an idea of process and the public, that we've had a recommendation presented. If that's something we want to move forward with, then we would schedule a public hearing that would give a community chance to provide input. There wouldn't be any action taken that night. We'd wait, you know, till the following meeting to take any kind of action, so that we've got plenty of time to study and gather information. At the public hearing, we would have more detailed information from our local staff as to where would the lines exactly be. We'd have information possibly about bus routes, things of that sort, so there would be more detailed information. I'm assuming we can get this information out on our board docs after the meeting. So folks will have time to review this information, will have time to comment at a later date, and we can pick that date tonight if you so choose, and then continue on from there. But with that, are there any questions? Mr. Plann?
Yes. I knew you made this statement, and I appreciate y'all bringing that up about the Kings Mountain Zone, that it was showing that the recommendation there, because y'all done the assessment there, and just like you did the Shelby Zone. And I just wanted to clear it up, because there was some statements got made over the week or two, last week or two, that there was nothing taking place. Well, they are not nothing taking place, because we really don't know what the growth is going to be down there for sure right now, that we've got to check into due to this, all this building that's taking place down there. But there was a recommendation from y'all on that Kings Mountain Zone, because y'all done the assessment on that. And I just wanted that clear, that as, that wasn't fiction, it was true. And here's a copy of the paperwork that came from y'all.
Yeah.
And everything. And it's not, it was not in that, the Kings Mountain talk was not in the presentation tonight, except for what y'all brought up at Delash, and I appreciate y'all bringing that up, and thank you. But I know that we have got to do some studying, because there are a lot of building going to take place at Kings Mountain, and we've got to be very careful on what we do down there with our builders. Thank you.
Mr. Glover?
Mr. Chair, I just want to clear, so you was talking about the intermediate, switching over to an elementary, and the capacity there, if we were to switch that over, could handle the pre-K with the numbers that you have? Is that what I understand?
Yeah, correct. So even on this slide that's up there, the last page of your handout, when you add, you know, it's approximately 10 years to have about 150, 152 pre-K students that need to have home. So right now, based on the projected enrollment at that new, we'll call it the new elementary school, even though it's at Shelby Intermediate, you could still integrate that enrollment into that school and still go meet within your targets based on the guiding principles of enrollment at schools.
Okay, thank you. I just want to clarify that. Thank you.
Mr. Eifers?
So Kings Mountain, I think I've spoke to y'all before, I'm on the planning board down there.
Yes, sir.
So I'm probably in a unique situation, you know, to understand the dynamics going on down there. So currently, there's 3,000 approved homes down there. We're seeing another subdivision tomorrow at a meeting. There's a couple of hundred more townhomes coming, and at one location, and there's another location under study right now for another several hundred townhomes. So I'm glad we're going to take a beat on Kings Mountain before we start looking, because we don't, I think we see a trend in where those homes are being built. But we don't yet know, you know, some of them are senior living, some of them are not, some of them are combination. Some of them's got pickleball courts, and Rodney might be moving down there, pretty sane. And they got teams too, from what I understand. But, so Kendy Keast is our consultant in Kings Mountain, and when I talked to y'all the last time, they had predicted the population to double in 10 years. They're going back and starting their study again, and from what I'm gathering from the planning department is that Kings Mountain's population will probably double in the next five to eight years. So that's a very dynamic situation down there. I have no idea how many of those will bring children with them and how many, but I do feel like there will be, the wave is not going to hit like a tidal wave, it's going to be a build, but that's something, I'm glad we're going to take our time and study that before we make any decisions on that.
And really, that's a really good point, too, which kind of relates to Mr. Plann, is there are more unknowns at Kings Mountain. And to what Hamilton said, you have to approach it differently based on those guiding principles than you would at Shelby. So we're not ready, you know, we weren't ready to make a recommendation then. We certainly did talk about all the options available for the district, for Kings Mountain, but the more information that we gather, the more informed decisions that you guys can make, and the better the recommendation will be overall.
I'm sure that, I don't know exactly when Kendy Keast's information will come in, but I'm sure it will be made available to y'all when it does.
That's great.
Just check with the planning department down there, and I'm sure they'll hand that over to you.
Fantastic.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions on the presentation? So the question before, if there's no question, I'll let you guys sit down. So the question before, if there's no question, I'll let these guys sit down.
Guys, thank you for your time.
If you're willing to take off, you know you've got to get back to Charlotte, or you're welcome to stay.
Sure, great. There is. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Hamilton.
So the Lord's question before you is, is you want to study a board? Do you want to schedule a public hearing? Do you have a discussion dates of the, I think it was the 25th, Tuesday or 25th, as a possibility for public hearing?
I'll make a motion that we have the public hearing and that, and we do answer questions for a person if they're any way possible, that we do, when we have this public hearing, that we be able to answer questions to.
All right, I'll be, should we get a date? It's the 25th.
What day is that on?
It's on conflict, the 24th, then 25th.
25th what?
Put this on Tuesday, January 25th. It's Tuesday, January 25th, that works. That work for you, Mr. Blanton?
Public hearing where?
So. Your motion to have public hearing?
And answer questions to the public.
That would schedule that at 6:00, our normal meeting time in this district. Is that, is that set to you, Mr. Blanton?
Safe to clock.
That's a fair representation of your motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Does that motion, if Blanton's interested in a public hearing, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Dr. Fisher, Kelly, y'all make sure that that would be January 25th, which is a Tuesday, 6:00 P.M., right here.
Mr. Queen, I believe your microphone's not on. I'm not hearing you real well.
I'm sorry, you're correct. Did you understand the motion?
Yes, I got the motion.
Okay.
Just to verify, this is just the public hearing for the Shelby attendance?
For the Shelby attendance, that is correct. Any further?
Anybody can come, but it's the Shelby.
Yeah, yeah, right. Any questions or discussion on scheduling the public hearing?
So.
Mr. Williams, please stop interrupting. We are discussing the Shelby Zone. No, ma'am, we've already had public participation. Mr. Uffers, you had a question?
The format is a standard public hearing format, so that it's more of an interchange.
I'll have to look, we'll have to review policy and check with our attorneys and make sure we follow what the law requires. It is more of an interchange than usual. Any other questions or discussion? All right, those in favor of the public hearing on January 25th at 6:00 P.M. in this location to discuss the Shelby School Zone, if you'd raise your hand. Mr. Shores? You're a little weak there, Mr. Short. What's your vote?
Aye.
Oh, there, okay, we got you that time.
Yes.
All right, next we have, under operations, we have the American Legion World Series Resolution that is in your packet. To summarize, American Legion is requesting to extend the canopies down the left and right field sides, add some more fans, upgrade the lighting on the baseball field, and the old lights are to be transferred to the tennis courts. And any changes to the batting cages must have superintendent approval before making any changes. What's the pleasure of the board? Motion by Mr. Hunt?
Second.
Second by Mr. Blanton. Any questions or discussion? Any questions or discussion? All right, those in favor of the American Legion World Series Resolution as presented, if you'd raise your hand?
Aye.
That's nine zero. We have Duke Energy easement at Foston Elementary. Duke Energy has requested an easement to repair a leaning power pole. They'll need to install a guy wire, so they need a little extra room, and that information is in your packet. Any questions or discussion on the easement that has been reviewed by the attorneys? What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Glover. I think I heard Mr. Hunt. Any questions or discussion?
Yes, that guy wire is not going to be in any danger. Is our people checked in, the maintenance checked in, that it's not going to interfere with any of our property or that it's going to cause an issue, is it? I see Mr. Childers back there.
Okay. Good one. Is Mr. Childers approved? He's my buddy. Any further questions or discussion?
I'll make a motion, we approve it.
We already got our motion in a second. All those in favor, if you'd raise your hand? Mr. Shores?
Aye.
Boy, operations has had a busy time here. Okay, we got a resolution to sell the Grover House and property. That resolution's in your packet. The board approved, I think it was in October, November, to put that property up for sale. Can't remember the exact date, but the upset bid process has been gone through, and the high bid is $132,000 for the residential property behind Grover's Elementary School. What's the pleasure of the board? What's that? Yes. Motion by Mr. Taylor. Second by Mr. Fitch. Any questions or discussion? Approval of this resolution will allow our attorneys to finalize sale of the property. All those in favor, if you'd raise your hand? Mr. Shores?
Aye.
Auditorium's at that date. Dr. Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. First of all, I want to make sure, make sure I'm clear when I start, that I am not asking for a board decision tonight. I want to try to make that clear in communication with that. Tonight's just an update, not a recommendation or decision may make tonight. As Mr. Karpinski stated in our budget, we do have $20 million in the budget for the auditorium, already in the budget. As you know, just to recap a few things, bids were open on Tuesday, December 21st that afternoon. We did have three bids for each auditorium. Beam Construction was a low bid with a combined base bid of $27,476,000. You have this information at your spots. I did, had a few questions about what that included, and as you know, looking at the plans and discussing that, there was quite a bit of site work on those campuses at Burns. We're actually building a new road, new exit and entrance, student exit, student entrance to the, to the school there. Actually, not a student entrance and exit, but a drop-off entrance and exit there at the school, redoing lots of parking lots, moving some things on both campuses. So I have highlighted there in blue, in that base bid really included over $2.6 million of site work, and you can see what that includes at Crest and over $2.3 million of site work at Burns. So there's an extensive amount of site work being done. If you remember, those were done in stages during the summer as far as student parking drives, all that information. Due to the fact that the amount of bid versus what we had in our budget, our operations team and Holland Hammerick and Beam Construction are really working to value engineer and look at all aspects of that proposed bid. We are redoing, you know, reviewing the finance options in terms of our financial ability to fund this project. Just as you, as you remember, based on lots of conversations in the past, we did receive a state needs basic capital funding grant in terms of $15 million. We have a three-to-one match with that and match that with capital reserve funding for $5 million, which put us at the $20 million. So we will need, if this recommendation and the board does approve that, we will need to look at other funding sources, which could include, but not limiting to additional capital reserve dollars, capital fund balance dollars. There also are additional future capital grant opportunities that we are able to apply for. In the past, if you got a grant, you couldn't reapply for a certain amount of time. Now we can reapply, and so we are beginning to work on a new grant application to be able to hopefully put all this together. You know, given the ongoing work of the value engineering and the alignment of funding resources, more than likely, we're going to need a special called meeting sometime, maybe next week, to look at this, if everything works out to look about approving that, which is our intention. We obviously have until January 21st to, the bid's good until the end to make work on that. So again, not asking for approval of that tonight, just wanted to update you on the status of that, our ongoing work with Beam and Holland Hammerick, with our finance team looking at all those different options to see where we can save some money and then what we can afford to do. At that time, we will, by the end of this week, look about a proposed date for a called meeting during the day, one day to potentially look about approving those auditoriums. Be glad to try and answer any questions, Mr. Queen.
Mr. Blanton?
I got several questions. $577, $577 and 8 cents a square foot is absolutely ridiculous that we've been waiting 52 years. And maybe due to COVID time, that might be a fair price. But I went to DPI, and I pulled, and those bid dates, you asked me about the bid dates, they were during the COVID, the bid dates. The average price was $242.57 for all the jobs of building an elementary school, a high school, and two elementary schools, another county work. We waited this long, and we would drain our, what do you call rainy day funds or whatever you want to call that, to build, I'm all for building these auditoriums, but it was 2017 that we had an estimated price of eight and a quarter million, not counting the site work. So use the site work that came up, which is $5,957,000. Use the site work, add that to it. Telling me that it's went up that much, hey, Beam's Construction has done a lot of work for us over the years. Good work, excellent, can't complain a bit. But I really think that this school board needs to think twice, and we need to have another public hearing to allow the people to speak, do they want us to spend that kind of money now or wait till these prices start coming back down some? I know they're coming down. I can prove that just by me building a carport. And I know that's realistic, a carport versus an auditorium. But just for an example, right over here at Lowe's, for one piece of soffit is $19.87 with my discount right now. You can go to Gastonia and buy that same piece of soffit for $7.11. So what I'm getting at, prices is coming down. I know a lot of contractors. My son's a contractor, but he ain't going to build nothing like this, but prices cannot stay up there the way they are. And if they are, it cannot go much higher. I think that we need to have the public's input before we go to spending $27 million for something that we had a price on four years ago at eight and a quarter million plus the site work.
Mr. Blanton, let me, let me make sure, and a couple of things. The price that was presented in a board meeting, you know, about five years ago or so, that was just an estimate. That was not a bid price? That was not anything like that?
Should never bring it before the public then if it's not a price that's standing good. The way I look at it.
When you say standing good, you're talking about a bid price. That was an estimate. We feel like this may estimate cost.
Well, if I may interrupt.
Yeah.
Those were budgetary numbers at that time based on a 16,000 square foot facility, and that was the best estimate of what we thought we needed. After going through and getting all the community input, our staff input, administrator input, and understanding what we really needed in an auditorium, those auditoriums are 24,000 square feet. So it's a 50% increase over the original budgetary numbers. So if you go eight and a quarter and add 50%, you're at 12.18. So you're right in line with about what these are going to be.
No, no, eight and a quarter was both of them.
Then you've got $2.5 million of grading cost per school. So it's, as I understand, there were about 10 or 11 folks that were going to bid on the projects up until about a week before the actual bids were due, and just, I hate using the excuse, and everybody's using it, but it's the COVID times we're in and the supply chain issues that we have that with steel, heating and air, and roofing materials that are just out of sight. And it's, it's not going to come down anytime soon, and delaying these, there is a drop dead date on the grant money. I believe it's five years.
Absolutely not. They told me that today. As long as we keep the auditoriums in, in that we were, were going to build them, there would not be no ending date. They told me that today.
Mr. Blanton, can you, can you clarify who told you that?
Yes.
Can you, can, can we get the information so Dr. Fisher and staff can verify?
Yes, sir, I'll give it to him just as soon as we get through here.
Thank you.
But as I understand tonight, where there's no, that there's no action requested, you, Mr. Holland, staff are working to finalize the numbers, the exact cost of the building, and then we're digging up all the mayonnaise jars we can find to pay for the building without completely killing ourselves on a rainy day fine. Is that a fair summarization?
That is a great summarization, and then at this point, at some point, we'll bring that back to the board and make a decision on whether we want to move forward or not.
We'll have to decide one way or the other before the 21st, so that the bids are still good.
Also, on that estimate, or y'all said that was just an estimate, there was 10 classrooms at Crest High School and eight at Burns on those, with those auditoriums at that time. You can go back to our November or December meeting and pull the minutes up, and it'll show that. There was 10 classrooms, so them 10 classrooms didn't cost anything? Or those eight classrooms? That's what I'm getting at. So that estimate was brought to us, and like I say, I'm all for it, but I think we ought to let the people speak when we're spending this kind of money, and especially when we got Burns, Crest, Shelby, and Kings Mountain that we're doing an assessment on, that it needs some major repairs on HVAC and roofs and windows, that we need to make sure that we got these buildings safe and up to par before we spend all that money too, which I know that we can't use the auditorium money. I know that for sure, that we cannot spend it on that, but we need to get them buildings in good shape. Thank you.
All right, Policy Committee, Mr. Uffers?
Okay, the Policy Committee has not met since the last board meeting. The update was provided at the December meeting, and the Policy Committee has not met, yeah, okay. Two policies have been discussed for several meetings, will be presented tonight for first read. Committee continues to work on Policies 4335 and 5120, focusing on investigations by law enforcement. The next Policy Committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, January 18th at noon.
Okay, there's two policies for first read. That's 3205 is academic freedom, and 3210 parental inspection of and objection to instructional materials. I think most of those are grammatical type corrections.
There's a little change.
Okay. You can find those on board docs, and the changes are unread. We have two policies for approval. These are coming from committee recommended for approval. It's Policy 2310, which is public participation at board meetings, which is primarily grammatical corrections and adding one sentence clarifying comments. Policy 1760 is prohibition against retaliation. Those are grammatical corrections. If there's no objection, we'll take both policies at the same time. Any objection? All right, those are, both policies are recommended for approval from committee. Those in favor, if you'd raise your hand. Mr. Shores?
Aye.
Safety Committee, Mr. Fitch.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. The Safety Committee, as we used to December meeting, as well as the board, Dr. Fisher introduced Terry Blanton, Ryan Etheridge, and Wendy Fitch. Terry Blanton and Ryan Etheridge are part of the district's award grant, and Wendy Fitch is the district director of exceptional children. The award grant is a five-year grant. Cleveland County Schools was one of only three districts in the state awarded the grant. As part of the grant, Cleveland County Schools has developed and been trained on extensive safety protocols. These protocols include, but are not limited to suicide and threat assessment. Terry Blanton and Ryan Etheridge went through the Cleveland County Schools process for our protocol, including school-level smart teams training with Mr., with Dr. Melissa Reeves. Committee was likely to ask questions about protocols and how they would be implemented in different scenarios. Dr. Greg Sheld and Sandy Hammerick had some insight about collaboration of all areas of the district. And our reports may come through the reporting system such as see something, say something. Several board members of the committee commented on the level of detail and appreciated the information and insight. The entire committee emphasized the importance of protocols and continued training in district practices of protocols. It was noted that the orders for the protocols and continued training in district practice protocols. It was noted that the Cleveland County Schools is in the fourth year of the grant. And if the closure of the grant, additional funds would be needed to support the level of work and support that district implementation. No updates on the road traffic, correction, no updates on the road traffic situation with available time remaining. The line of order stated last, Greg Sheld and Sandy Hammerick all provided some brief details from the areas of director of RPEs that were related to student school safety. But no few business committee was in charge. Next school safety committee meeting scheduled for August 26th.
Thank you, Mr. Fitch. Next is the superintendent's update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Trying to run through a few little data with you fairly quickly, just as, as a couple of updates. Staff return to work, as you're all aware, teacher work days on Tuesday and Wednesday. Our students return to school Thursday, January 6th, and been in school Thursday, Friday, and, and again today. Upon return to school, Cleveland County Schools, like our community and like everyone seemingly across the nation, state, and nation, have seen significant increase in COVID cases and activity primarily to the present, to the presence of the new variant. I think that's not just in Cleveland County Schools, but that's on the news everywhere, continue like that. I gave, giving you a chart, had you seen this, most of our updates? I, I did start this November the 1st. If I go back and put August, September, and October there, the font would be so small, you wouldn't be able to read that. So you can see the active positive cases and the active contacts. And just remember those are, those are active students, positive in school or that were counted that day. That's not a cumulative number. That is the number of active positives and active contacts, quarantines that we've had over time. So you can see how that trend, especially in the contacts, started to increase in December and then where we were January 7th on, on that Friday. I've got the graphic display of that, and this does go all the way back to August to see where we were in August. And you can see the significant increase that we've seen as we've come back to school after Christmas. That is the active positive cases. This is the active contacts and quarantines. You do have a chart at your spots. The Ms. Fulls and the Health Department pulled today's data as of 4:00 with the number of active positives and active contacts that we have as of today, January 10th. That data is not shown on this chart because they pulled that at the end of, of the, of the day today. This data was pulled at 11:00 AM this morning. The positivity rate was 24.9. I do believe that, that has increased, updated since then. But this data was pulled and put together at 11:00 AM this morning, the number of new cases in the last 14, seven days and over the last day. Again, when you put, I've tried to, to make sure I include, like on this slide, the time that day was pulled because it seems to increase as you, as you go along there. Just a few things in general, as far as the toolkit. The toolkit, I think, has since we've been back to school, I think the toolkit's been updated two or three times. The last major update was Friday the 7th. Updates include that students and staff considered fully vaccinated, if they're 18 and up, must have the primary series and the booster if they're to be eligible for, considered for exemption from having to quarantine. And that has changed. Prior to Christmas, it was just if you've had the, you're, you've been vaccinated, you've had both series of the full series of the vaccination. But now to be considered fully vaccinated, you must have the booster for students and staff that are 18 years and above. Students five to 17 must have completed the primary series to be considered exempt. Students and staff in this category, the person does not need to be excluded from school if they have had no symptoms after being in close contact with someone with COVID. So if you're fully vaccinated, and again, for 18 and above, that means you've had the booster. You do not have to quarantine if you're a close contact. You must continue to wear a mask for 10 days after the exposure to minimize the risk of affecting others. And, and recommend and get a test at day five. That's not a requirement, that is a recommendation. If you do not meet the criteria, you'll be required to quarantine for five days, returning on day six. And, but when you return on day six, you must mask through day 10. One change in the counting of days, in, in the, the old, prior to Christmas, prior to the new year, the guidelines were that the day of exposure was day one and you counted from then. Now the day of exposure is day zero. You count the next day as day one, two, three, four, and five. So it's five full, if you're a close contact and you've not been fully vaccinated, it's required five days of, of quarantine. If you're not asymptomatic, you have no symptoms, you may return on day six, but you must wear a mask through day 10. Now, one change with mask on mask, meaning if, if both people have the mask, if the person that, that is COVID positive and the contact, they both have a mask, then they do not need to be excluded from school. And that was the same prior, but now it applies to extracurricular activities outside of school settings, including athletic events and school transportation. If, if you have mask and mask, neither one of those people has to isolate, or the person with COVID has to isolate. But anybody that would be deemed a close contact does not have to isolate if they're mask on mask. I've included some other information here. This is just, and I've emailed this to you. This is just a part of, of the quarantine exposure. Again, I think that the highlight there would be if people are symptomatic, they should not be at school. They should not be at work, should report that. If you've been a close contact, even if you're vaccinated, if you become symptomatic, you don't need to think, well, I've been vaccinated, I've got symptoms, I still go. If you become symptomatic, then regardless if you're vaccinated, as in that second bullet, then you should quarantine for, for your five-day period. And then you may return after day, on day six, if you know, do not have symptoms, excuse me. The 90 days from the prior, if you had COVID in the last 90 days, that you said if you're exposed, you do not have to quarantine, but you should wear a mask for those 10 days. There is exemption for household exposures, and that's changed just within the day of how to handle household exposures. Then they do recommend testing on the fifth day if you've been exposed, returning to school. And I know I went through that quickly, been here for a while, but any questions about the new COVID guidance?
I got one. If a person is retiring and then they get quarantined, is that held against them when they have to go home and be quarantined for 10 days or five days or whatever? Does, does that, would that count against them? Or is there a retirement date still coming up when it comes up?
It wouldn't affect their retirement date.
Wouldn't affect anyway, okay.
I mean, if you're, if someone is a close contact and they have to quarantine, there's a process.
Don't affect their days.
Well, there's, there's a process and procedure they go through in terms of contagious disease leave. But I wouldn't, it wouldn't impact anything as far as retirement and all that.
All right, good enough.
Any other questions for Dr. Fisher?
And Mr. Chair, just as a reminder, we do need to take board action about masks tonight.
One quick question.
Yes, go ahead.
We've been back for three days since the holidays. How many classrooms have we shut down for those three days?
We have officially shut down our first classroom today. Our, the, we have a classroom at Shelby Middle School that we shut down today. We've had some pre-K issues where we've had to combine some classrooms because of staff. So we've, at this point, we've shut down one classroom. I believe that's correct.
As a, as a reminder, Senate Bill 654, we have to vote. There were 30 days to maintain, well, let me back up. Right now, our mask requirement is mask optional, except for on transportation, on our yellow buses and white buses, that's still mandated by federal law. So we need a motion to maintain what we're doing or a motion to change something.
I'll make a motion that we leave it as it is, people's choice.
So a motion by Mr. Blanton, seconded by Mr. Umpers. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Taylor?
On the staff positive, I'm Fisher, on.
If you check your mic.
Sorry, on January 7th and January 10th, you, you show 63 staff positive, 48 on the 10th. Is that a cumulative number or, or some of those counted in January the 7th, counted again in, on the 10th?
So.
And the reason, the reason I ask is, if we get to the point that we have, we have to start closing classrooms because of staff, where does that put us?
So, great, great question, great point. So on January 7th, when that data was pulled, on Friday afternoon, evening, we had 63 staff currently that were positive for COVID. And so when we, when that data was pulled this afternoon, my guess is many of those 48 were counted in that 63. But some of that 63 that were counted on Friday, there would have been several of them that maybe their, their days, quarantine days would have ended either Friday or Saturday or something. You probably had some new in that 48. So it's not a cumulative number, but some would have been counted in both, some would not have been. Now, the, in, in the data on the January 10th today was pulled about 4:00. So I was in my office and actually I was on the phone with, with one of the board members. And that data, I could see that data populating, you know, on my spreadsheet as that was entered in by the Health Department. So that is, that moment in time when that was reported, we had 152 students positive today, 692 contacts, and 48 staff members that are positive. I will say, you know, you bring up a good point in terms of staff positive and how that impacts school. The classroom we had to close was not because of students, it was because of staff positive. And so as we've looked at a couple of our pre-K classrooms, that's been the issue. We've been able to say, okay, we had staff positive. We've been able to take, you know, some of those kids had to quarantine, some did not. So we've been able to move those kids and to combine some classrooms. So, you know, I think that, and one of the questions I had from a board member was, is there a number? And I think we can really evaluate, how can we safely run our schools? And if it comes a time where we can't run a school efficiently and, and, and keep it safe from a staff standpoint, then we'll have to look at whether that's a classroom, a grade level, or even a school from that perspective. But, you know, as of right now, other than that classroom, we've not, you know, we've not had concerns. We do have, our staff is, is working extremely hard. I can't say enough about the efforts of our entire staff because it's not easy when you're having staff out, having staff in quarantine, and these are just staff positives. So you've got other staff members that are quarantining out. So we've got teachers covering other teachers' classrooms. You know, finding substitutes is very challenging and difficult. We've got teacher assistants covering classrooms. I mean, we've got, you know, a lot of people that are covering classes. So that, that is a challenge and it's something that our staff has, has really risen to the occasion to do. But it, it, it's not easy.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Fisher. Is, and now you'd mentioned that acceptable number of staff positives depending on when, when that, when that, that point reaches. All right, do we shut down a classroom or a grade level? Is that something that's, I'm just, I'm assuming that's something that's being looked at daily? That if, that if we, if we start, start experiencing higher number of staff positive, which directly correlate with student positives, that can be addressed sooner than within, within the following months?
Yes, sir. And, and the general statutes in a way, you know, the, the guidelines or protocols that work in North Carolina right now is the board cannot make a decision for us to go to full remote. We, we cannot go into Plan A. But basically, the board and, and the superintendent has the authority to do short-term closures, like we've done with a classroom. We closed that classroom for the rest of this week. We plan to reopen that classroom Monday, given the, the staff. So the one good thing about the, the, the quarantine, the changing quarantine guidelines is that quarantine time is shorter. We are seeing a lot of people that have very mild or asymptomatic, and so that quarantine time is shorter. Those folks can go back. That doesn't apply to everybody. We do have folks that, that are still symptomatic all the time. And again, what we would emphasize is just because your quarantine time's over, if you're still symptomatic, you're not to return to school, not to return to work. There's not, there's not a, you know, I'm, I'm at day six and that means I can go back. If you're still symptomatic, then you should not return. But that's something, Mr. Taylor, that we look at not just daily, but constantly. I will say my email is constantly populated from our school-based administrators letting us know. We have positives, student positives, staff positives. Ms. Wampler and I probably talk 30 times a day just about COVID positives and, and those type of things.
And just as a reminder, in our first vote back in early August, we empowered the superintendent to, to take care of those day-to-day things. If he needed to make a decision to close a classroom or a grade level, he, he has authority to do that from the board.
Yeah, and, and thank you. I just, my, my question, I guess I was, I didn't clarify. If the, if the numbers start increasing significantly, can we as a board reevaluate if we see the need that we may have to reinforce the mask? That's my question.
I, I think if you get to a situation and, and, you know, anytime that the board can say, hey, we needed either a special call meeting or an emergency meeting to, to, to change our, our mask ruling, we can. That's one of those things that, you know, I try to keep. This, this information is pulled on Monday and Friday. This is pulled directly from, each school has a COVID database that, that either school health nurse or school health tech is entering that data. This data is pulled together by the Health Department, sent to us. But yes, that's something we can constantly, we, you know, Ms. Wampler and I can really kind of predict what this is because we're getting those in on a daily basis. So we know, oh my goodness, we're getting bombarded in this area. And, and one of the big concerns is special area things, small sections, whether it's a pre-K, whether it's a specialized class and that type of thing, because those are specialized situations where you have unique staff there. You know, it's, it's not as, it's important, but it's not as dramatic when you have just, you know, students that are, that are regular ed teachers or those type of things.
Mr. Hunt?
I think we need to pay attention to the numbers. So what I've noticed is with this variant, we're getting a lot more people to sit. They might not be as sick as long, or some of them that's been fully vaccinated may not experience their serious symptoms. But the numbers are increasing in the schools. And we need to, we need to look at how we protect our students and how we protect our staffs. As we, you know, as we make a decision on, on, on how we're going to mask, if we're going to mask, and, and at what level we mask.
What?
We need to look at, at what's going on in the school.
Mr. Shores, are you okay?
My dog barked.
We can attack by my dog, yeah. I have one question for Dr. Fisher. I know I mentioned to you maybe last week about tests to stay. Is there any update on?
Yes, sir, we have met, we have met with our Health Department about tests to stay. As you know, we do have some nurse vacancies and tests to stay. We, our nurse vacancies in our school. And talking with our Health Department right now, they, they didn't recommend tests to stay just because of the amount of, of work being done already by our school nurses and our health techs. In addition, there's some language in the health to stay conversation right now about mask mandatory. And so I think if we're mask mandatory, then tests to stay becomes a bigger possibility. And so I think if we're mask mandatory, then test to stay becomes a bigger possibility than test to stay comes if we're mask optional. Test to stay requires students to, that can opt in for testing, if they're in exposure and they're not fully vaccinated, they can test on day one, day five, and day 10. And so the Health Department is concerned about the available staffing they have and the amount of testing that would require. And we are testing now, we are testing with parental permission consent for students that are symptomatic in our schools now, but the, you know, there was some concern from the Health Department about just the increased workload with the limited staff from healthcare situation they have. I do think, Mr. Shores, that we, we didn't say we're not going to do it. I think we kind of left that on a pause for right now, just with the increased number of contacts and the volume of students that that would, would incur. The other factor in that is the shortened quarantine time. Many times that by the time we get a positive result and we contact trace and do that work, then the student's quarantine time is almost over if they're asymptomatic. So test to stay would, in some cases, would be a tremendous amount of work for really a day or two of alleviating quarantine. But that's something that's not off the table. It's just from the Health Department and management perspective of that, it was quite a bit to manage.
One quick, one quick question. On the North Carolina toolkit, if you have exposure, the person must continue to wear a mask for 10 days, even if they have filled out an exemption form in the past, that does not apply to that, correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
So this is totally different? When we say optional, that's not an optional on that part, correct?
That is, that's correct, Mr. Green. That's a great point. So if you're a close contact, you, and you're, if you're a close contact and you have not been fully vaccinated, then you've got to quarantine for five days. You are eligible to come back on day six if you're willing to wear the mask. If not, your quarantine is the full 10 days. So you're exactly right, to qualify for that short quarantine, you have to wear a mask coming back. So if a student is a close contact and they're vaccinated, they don't have to quarantine at all, but they still have to wear a mask. So to be able to reduce that quarantine, you must wear a mask. If you don't want to wear a mask, then that's fine, you just have to, you just have to do the full quarantine.
I just want to clarify that so there's no misunderstanding with...
That's right.
If we vote, if the vote goes for optional, that does not pertain to that part of the school.
That's right. You're optional if you're not a close contact. Once you become a contact, then all those other rules fall into place.
Thank you.
Mr. Blanton?
All right. At that fifth day or the sixth day, and they choose not to wear a mask, so they have to go 10 days, or is that excused or unexcused by that fifth, from the fifth day to the 10th day?
It's coded as quarantine absence, and so that's an excused absence.
Okay.
Now, you know, we, there is a code for attendance called present remote, and so if those kids are working online, they're doing that, they're meeting that, they can be coded as present remote, but they can be coded as quarantine, and a quarantine is an excused absence.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Green?
Well, they asked the two questions I have, but I wanted to know, how do we look on testing? Because we're hearing that there is a shortage on a lot of the testing. Do we still have ample testing in the schools?
Right now, our, new meeting with Friday with our Health Department, there was a little concern of hoping they got new supplies in and that type of thing, but right now, there did not need, there was not an absence of or lack of supplies for testing in our schools. But I do think that if, if they cannot get new supplies in, you know, within the next week or two, then there will, there could be some issues there.
Yeah. Ms. Blanton?
Um, so, did, I guess you talked to Tiffany about the peak. So we're looking at the peak being this week, next week, somewhere in this range?
Well, you know, no one really knows. You know, but I would, you know, I think we hope that, you know, we'll get through school. We always talked about this, and, you know, even from the very beginning, when we started this, and we came back to school in the fall of 2020, and looking at this in really 14-day cycles. And so I do think still we look at that as a 14-day cycle, of what, if we can get through this first 14-day cycle, then what does that look like, you know, the middle or end of next week? You know, I would, I would think that we'll start to see some improvement. I would hope that we start to see some improvement, but, you know, those are things that we're, you know, you just look at, you, based on, you know, data from this variant from other places, other countries, it seemed to come quickly and then it seemed to go, but, you know, we're...
We're hoping that it's the dagger that they're saying it is. It's, I know...
Hoping...
Her was like a big sign wave.
Yep.
Her, but this one appears to be virtually a peak.
You could see in the presentation of the number of positives as, just, you know, it did not, it was not a steady incline, it was a very steep incline. And so, you know, we'll know more as we're, as we're in school longer from the break. You know, there's some data released from Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools today. They've been in school all week last week, so they've got, you know, six days in school where we've got three, so we'll be able to look at that and see.
Mr. Fisher, I want to give you a... I want to ask one question about tests. What type of test do we use? Are we using the PCR rapid test? Or we use the rapid test? Because there is a difference. Rapid test is not as accurate as PCR rapid test. So what type of test are we using? Because we've been told the rapid test itself is only 60% accurate on the negative.
That is a, that is a Health Department question. They are doing that, I'm pretty sure...
I wanted to see how good you did for that one.
Ms. Fisher, I'm pretty sure they are using, we're testing in school, I believe that's a, I think that's a PCR test, but don't quote me on that. I'd have to get...
You receive your rapid test, you do about immediately. PCR rapid test takes about 30 minutes, but it also costs about $7 per test. So the rapid test doesn't cost.
I believe it's the PCR test, PCR rapid, that the Health Department is using, but I'd have to confirm that, because they are doing that testing.
Because it is a lot more accurate.
Yes, I believe that's what they're doing. Now, you know, we do have students taking at-home tests. You know, one of the things, if you're, if you're symptomatic and then you're coming back, you have to have a PCR test if you're symptomatic, and then you, if you've been exposed and you're symptomatic, you have to have a PCR test to come back to school. So that, they do require that PCR test to be able to do that.
It is a rapid test. It is rapid.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Wampler.
Any other questions? We got a motion on the table to maintain our current COVID protocols with optional masks. And then we got a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion as presented, if you'd raise your hand.
Uh, I...
All opposed? We've got 6-3. Board member comments? Mr. Taylor, you got anything?
I do not.
Ms. Green? Mr. Blanton?
Yes. When we talked about the insurance deal a while ago, about our employees' insurance, I believe I was told a year ago that we would check into this in '22, for the '22, '23, and I believe it was a vote went for us to stay as we were, not to check in to other companies. I believe I understood that, right? If I didn't, I'll correct myself right here. But I believe it was in the report, the committee report, that on that insurance, that we would not be looking into it in '22 of checking out.
Mr. Shores, do you have anything?
Mr. Shores is the one that said that the last time. He is the one that made that motion a year ago.
Mr. Shores, do you have any comments?
At the time, my understanding of that was we would be able to get prices. Mr. Blanton?
That's correct.
I was informed that it would only, it would only be services, that we could not compare prices, and with us not being able to compare prices, there's a potential that some folks could actually lose their insurance if they had a term policy and they left the company and went with another company. There was a number of folks that really liked the Aflac that the other companies did not offer, so the thought was that we're not going to be able to compare prices, and 95%, 96%...
Who said we couldn't compare prices?
Insurance, it can only be for services. It cannot be, we cannot compare because we, this is a, there's like 11 umbrellas under each company, from long-term disability, short-term disability, life insurance, there's all kinds of things. You just can't pinpoint and pull one from one company and go to the other. There's...
Mr. Shores, if I can, if I can, Joel, can you hear me? If I can interrupt, that's our financing personnel, and we've been through that. We can discuss that again during committee instead of drawing out our board member comments. Do you have anything on a personal note?
No, no. Have a good night.
Okay. Mr. Humphers?
No.
Mr. Hunt? Mr. Fitch? All right, I need a motion to enter into closed session in accordance with General Statute 143, 318, point 11, subsections A3 and A6, as to consult with our attorney and for confidential personnel discussion. Do I have such a motion? Mr. Hunt? Is there a second?
Say.
I think I heard Mr. Taylor. Those in favor of entering closed session, if you'd raise your hand. Mr. Shores? I know you don't get to go, but we're going to call it eight to zero.
Yeah, yeah, I don't get to go.
Okay. We will make sure you know when we return. Do we have a motion to re-enter open session?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Blanton, second by Mr. Fitch. Those in favor, if you'd raise your hand. All right, and that's unanimous. In closed session, we discussed a new administrative salary scale and approved that. The second item, we discussed sale of the central school property, and that is the next item on our agenda. In November, the board voted to table a decision on the central school property until January 10th, and it's now January 10th. And, let's see, we have received an initial offer to purchase this property in an amount of $750,000. So what is the pleasure of the board?
But Bushwood said...
Okay. Got a motion by Mr. Fitch, second by Mr. Taylor, and what this will do is accept the bid for $750,000. It will start the upset bid process, which will be a 10-day rotation until that's done with. Any further questions or discussion? Those in favor of accepting the bid of $750,000 for the old central school property, if you'd raise your hand? And that's unanimous. I will note that Mr. Shores decided not to join us after closed session, so those votes are eight, zero. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Wait. We're going to vote on this, on that other?
On whatever.
That you brought out at first?
It's already been voted on. That was voted in closed session.
Oh.
Motion to adjourn?
I voted closed session.
Okay.
I voted no.
All right, we're adjourned.